Take a minute.
We ready to go, Justin?
I'm gonna fix the.
I will call this meeting of the Blue Lake City Council. I'm calling this meeting of the Blue Lake City Council Tuesday, November twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four at six thirty P. M. Our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you establish a quorum of the council, please? Here.
Mayor from council.
Present.
Councilmember Connie here, councilmember Edgar.
Here.
Councilmember Tyre.
Here.
Thank you. We are on item three, approval of agenda. I'll come to council first. Is there anyone that would like to move anything around in the agenda? It's a very full agenda this evening.
I would like to bring the discussion about security at the power plant forward to above between eight and nine.
Well, it hasn't been agendized, so I don't think we can talk about it anyway tonight if it's going to be moved off of the consent calendar.
Well, it was supposed to be an agendized item for discussion, and I think that we are able to discuss it. Where it is, so I don't know why we wouldn't be able to move it.
Well, I don't.
We could just, we could just take the manager's report.
I think, I think the other thing, too, is that there might be a liability concern, might something that might have to be put onto, um, not on the public component, component of the agenda.
Well, I guess that could be decided when we have a.
I think that might be something that we have, might have to talk about. I mean, have, has there been attorney input on that?
There has. So if you want to have a discussion outside of what the, um, what my recommendation is for that item, then that needs to go under a closed session. Um, and that would go under, uh, potential litigation. So it, um, that is the recommendation from your attorney.
Okay. Any other changes anyone would like to make? Well, I, do we want to leave it as a, do we want to leave that item then? On the consent calendar or move it to a closed session item for the tenth?
I think it should go to a closed session item then.
Okay.
Um, I think it.
Okay. Okay, so then it's coming off of this item eleven. I.
If you want to
Right.
diverge from the item, what's recommended in the item itself, then you need to do that under a future agenda item and move that to a session under a closed session under, um, potential litigation.
Right, so we'll just pull that component when we get to council correspondence. I'm sorry, um, item eleven, reports of council and staff, we'll pull that and then add that to future agenda items.
So we don't need to change the agenda for that?
Okay.
No.
Any other changes anyone would like to recommend on council? Anybody from the public? Lots of people on Zoom this evening. Don't see any hands. Okay, back to council for a vote on the agenda. So moved?
I'll second.
Motion made to approve the agenda as delivered, seconded, uh, made by Angela Schultz, seconded by Elise Scifani. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. We have an agenda. Item four is public comment. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to fifteen minutes for this public input session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Is there anyone here for public comment? And I see a hand.
Lori Ponte.
Lori Ponte and then Becky. Go ahead, Lori.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. I thought I was unmuted, but I guess I wasn't. So I, you can hear me. Okay, now?
Yes, we can hear you now. Go ahead.
Sorry about that. Um, so on November fourteenth, I sent an email. Um, it was addressed to you, Mayor Jones, uh, councilperson Scifani and Mandy Mager. Uh, because I understood that you were the, the three that worked on the agenda items. Um, in this, in this, uh, email, I had asked that if there could be an update on both the Storyland and Danko projects at this current meeting that we're in. Um, and I did get a response from you, Mayor Jones, the next day, saying that you felt like it's up to the new council to have that review and wanted to put that off. Um, my only, uh, concern is that I had asked that these emails be included in the correspondence for tonight's meeting. And after looking through the agenda, um, it looks like they were left out. So I just wanted to make sure that, um, my email had been, um, heard to the general group, even though it wasn't included in the correspondence. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Becky, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, so I've normally, um, during public comment, I would be doing this later during council correspondence, but, um, we're not allowed to speak during that time. So I would just, um, wanted to say about the letter from Jason Cruz that's in council correspondence. Um, I watched that meeting and I just do not see what he had to say there was appropriate. I just, um, was a little confused as to why he would have had anything to say about what Elise had done. She, um, did a wonderful job of speaking up at that meeting. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And there's one more. Julie. Thank you.
Thank you all for having Zoom. I really appreciate it. I've scrambled as much as I can to get every trigger in my barn as quiet as possible. Um, I just really want to thank you all. Um, um, Chol, Jones, Edgar. You've all done a really good job and I really do thank you and I hope to see continuance, um, within our commissions and stuff. Chris, I had mentioned before about a public works report. I think that still would be really fun to do that. Um, other, other jurisdictions do that and it's really a nice, um, connection between public works and the community. And I just want to thank everybody for all their hard work throughout the years, the public's on Zoom, the public in house. And I think we've got a lot of good solutions coming our way and I think we've got a lot better dialogue coming our way and I'm very proud of all of that and I'm proud of everybody in this community. So remember that when we think we want to judge others. Like, we're all trying hard, but at the same time, we're all just trying to have the same consensus and the same, um, seat at the table a little bit. So, um, as we're getting into Thanksgiving, let's be thankful. This farmer just is very thankful and I want everybody else in our community to be very thankful too. Okay, I'll be back.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes. Ted Hills.
Um, I just wanted to say I echo Becky's comment about the letters from Jason Cruz. Having watched the videos and, uh, actually read transcripts of, of the actual words that were said by Elise Scifani in response to the various subjects that were talked about, they don't really accurately reflect what actually happened there and seem to be rather, well, rather self-serving. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on a non-agenda item?
Hi, this is Jean.
Hi, Jean. We can hear you.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree, um, with, um, Becky and Ted. I was at the meeting, um, with, yeah, the safety committee meeting that, uh, Jason Cruz is speaking of. Um, and my big concern, um, which I, I believe that, uh, Elise, um, did a very good job of pointing out um, that the information that was shared at that meeting, uh, was, uh, not nefarious, I believe is the word that she used. Uh, and I would like, and I have concerns that what was said at the meeting was beyond the scope of the safety committee. The safety committee, and I expressed that during the meeting, the safety committee is an advisory committee. And the words that were spoken during the meeting, uh, kind of pushed the limit as far as, uh, policy and who makes policy. And I would actually like to have, uh, a review of what happened during that meeting to clarify, uh, the, uh, position of the council on, um, on the direction of the safety committee and, uh, the, uh, policy infringement. I've, I, I saw it as a policy infringement on the council on who was directing policy. And we can discuss that at a future meeting as far as putting that on, uh, on a further agenda, but I would like to see that done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Any other public comment this evening on a non-agenda item? Okay, seeing no more hands, we move on then to item five, which is our Humboldt County Association of Governments Unmet Transit Needs Public Hearing. The Humboldt County Association of Governments, HCOG, conducts yearly outreach to identify and quantify unmet transit needs in our community and the region. HCOG staff will present the unmet transit needs process via Zoom, including providing information on how residents can participate in the process. The city will hold a public hearing on December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four to allow the public the opportunity to present their concerns and needs when a survey is available for those that wish to present their concerns online or via written survey. Do we have someone from HCOG on Zoom here?
Danielle, hopefully everyone can hear me over in Blue Lake. I'm in Eureka. Um, and, um, echo, um, one of the public speakers and express my appreciation for enabling me to participate this evening via Zoom. So I, I appreciate that opportunity. Um, so I'm gonna, I have a presentation, so I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen here and hopefully we have no techno, tech. Um, I'm gonna send a little request, um, as that gets sorted out, um, or it could be, uh, the city has it also in-house, so, um, it could be shared that way, too. So let's see if that's, uh, all right, we're in business, super duper, everybody. So here we go. And we're gonna go ahead and get started here. All right. We're in business, good news. All right, so, um, like I was saying, all the slides that are in this slide deck that you're seeing, um, they've already been provided to the city clerk, um, to be shared with the residents and the, um, and with, uh, the council. And following my presentation this evening, um, is just to, uh, open the public hearing to allow residents, um, an opportu- opportunity to comment on transit needs. And we'll go ahead and take those in and then, um, there'll be, as indicated in the agenda item, a follow-up meeting on, uh, December tenth. Uh, and I want to, before I get started, um, for even folks who may ride transit, who may have never ridden, ridden transit, um, all input is welcome and is valuable, um, because it's used as documentation to support, um, grant applications for improving transit service. Um, so we, that's definitely welcomed. And, uh, one more point, a public comment, um, is being accepted through the end of the year for this, um, unmet transit needs cycle. I need to move this thing, get this thing to go away. All right, let's go. So, um, and all, this, this slide's just giving a brief overview of the unmet transit needs process and kind of the foundations. Um, so the unmet transit needs, um, process comes out of the Transportation Development Act, which is a part of state law and provides funding for transit. An unmet transit need is a public transportation need that is not being met by the current transportation system. And the unmet transit need first, you identify if there are unmet transit needs in the community and then, then there those that have been, um, expressed, um, in the community, those are then evaluated, uh, to determine if they are reasonable to meet. So, um, as part of that process, um, the, the existing public transportation system is evaluated for its adequacy. And locally, how we obtain, HCOG obtains this input is like this hearing tonight and others have been held throughout the, the county and in the cities, um, releasing the online survey and, um, folks can, um, provide written comments via email or they can even call the HCOG office. And, um, I have information at the end of the slide deck about that. So, um, first thing is, uh, are there unmet transit needs? Are these out in the community? And, and, um, there are some criteria that are come out of the Transportation Development Act, but they, those standards can be, uh, locally modified by the HCOG board so long as they, um, continue to meet the state law. So in some, an unmet transit need, it could be trips that have been requested by residents who do not have access to, uh, public transportation or specialized transportation. Um, it could also be requested trips for, um, for, from residents who do not have the means to travel for medical care, shopping, social recreational ser- activities, their jobs, um, education. Um, it could also be, uh, transportation services that were identified in a regional transportation plan. And that there's, uh, sufficient broad-based community support, um, which means that persons who will likely use the service on a routine basis have demonstrated support. So in, in, uh, in short, that's what the unmet transit needs are. And then, um, uh, the reasonable to meet criteria, the service has to be operationally feasible and financially sustainable, which means there's adequate roadways and it's safe to operate. Um, there's sufficient funding that's been identified and is available for, um, three years to cover the marginal operating cost of that service. Uh, the service, uh, must be projected to meet the minimum marginal fare box return ratio of ten percent within two years. Um, it doesn't, reasonable to meet criteria doesn't, um, you don't get into a comparison of transit needs versus the needs for streets and roads. Um, and the performance of, so if a service is launched, uh, as a result of this process, um, it is, uh, its performance is evaluated regularly, uh, following implementation, the first, uh, couple of years of service, uh, for its performance. There is an expectation that when a new service is launched, that it's not, the optimal ridership is not immediately met. So there's, um, but to see if the, the ridership, um, and participation does increase over time. So this slide just gives an overview of the cycle and the unmet transit need cycle is an annual, um, process. And so we're in this, uh, the public comment period, which runs, uh, through the end of the year. Um, following that, uh, the public comments that are received will be compiled and reviewed with the transit providers. A report will be prepared. It will be presented to the Social Services Technical Advisory Committee, which, uh, provides recommendations on the draft report of findings to the HCOG board. Um, public review of the draft and then ultimately looking at adoption by the HCOG board in May of two thousand and twenty-five. So there are, um, transit needs that are, uh, that are heard, um, fairly consistently through this process on an annual basis. Um, so the need for more frequent service, earlier and later service during the workdays, Sunday service on, uh, RTS, that's the regional, um, route. And later night service on Friday and Saturday between Arcata and Eureka. So these are things that have frequently come up from, um, uh, and is, as a result of this process. So just in terms of ridership, um, kind of just, uh, some recent trends. Um, the blue bar on the far left of these graphs for RTS and ETS represent, um, the fiscal year, uh, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. Uh, and then that orange one, it would be a pandemic and the very big dip in ridership that was seen across the board. But the numbers are, um, are continuing to improve, uh, by and large for everybody. The routes, uh, and services operated by HTA. And so these, uh, this slide is showing, um, Southern Humboldt on the far left, Willow Creek in the middle, and Dial-A-Ride, um, on the right. So, um, there's still some, a lot of catch-ups from where, uh, where ridership was at, at the, before the pandemic. Um, and I did hear it, one, one question was where did all the riders go? Um, I, um, uh, the thought is that, um, that some folks are still, um, working from home and that some of the, um, colleges, uh, HSU CR, they're still providing, uh, online learning. So with those, um, opportunities, there, uh, there's not as much ridership. Um, it hasn't caught up to the previous letters, levels, but generally, you know, it has been improving. Um, it's Dial-A-Ride did see a dip last, in this last fiscal year. So, but overall, uh, total ridership, uh, HTA's on the HTA system was, um, over four hundred and eighty thousand passenger trips last, in this last fiscal year. And this graph just gives kind of a similar information just over a lon- longer span of time and showing that, um, between two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three, the ridership, um, grew twenty-five percent. And then the most least, more recently, um, uh, is continued to increase, but at a slower rate. And, um, Arcata Mad River, um, very similar, uh, trend of increasing ridership, even though, uh, Cal Poly HSU enrollment has, um, basically been flat. Uh, so that's what this information is showing. So in terms of HTA and, um, what's going on there and some of their more recent, uh, accomplishments and also, uh, programs that they're launching, adding hydrogen fueling station and hydrogen buses, the development of an intermodal transit center in Eureka, and they were very recently awarded a grant, um, for eighteen point seven million to expand the fleet of vehicles that are low emission, prove the availability of information for transit riders. That would be, uh, arrival and departure. Um, information including, um, at the stops, uh, some, uh, uh, capital improvements so that information could be displayed at bus stops and just a increase in frequency of service. Additionally, um, as you may have seen, uh, there's unified branding and fares, uh, across their routes. Uh, it's a two-dollar fare. Uh, there's still discounts available for, um, for riders. Um, they also have implemented tap-to-pay and then they have launched a soft pilot projects for, soft launch for a pilot project called Flex Rider, which is, uh, micro-transit. This is on-demand shared rider service that operates from bus stop to bus stop. Um, this has been launched, um, on, in the Humb- in the greater Humboldt Bay area. And what it does is it uses, uh, available spots on Dial-A-Ride buses because those are by reservation service. And also the North State Express that launched, um, in early, earlier this year. And you, for two dollars, uh, go from Eureka to Ukiah, um, in a similar amount of time as driving a private vehicle. This operates, uh, during the weekdays and then from there you can use the Mendocino Transit System to, uh, connect down to Santa Rosa. Uh, and then from there you could actually take, um, other transit to reach the Bay Area. And going north, you can actually connect up to Willow Creek, or not Willow, excuse me, sorry, Crescent City. And if, um, attend, if people are in the room or, uh, in the community that have questions or would like to provide input, this is one way, two ways to do it. Uh, you can email the HCOG office. You can also call the HCOG office. And if folks are interested in taking the online survey, um, it's hundred percent anonymous. It's available in both English and Spanish. It'll take, um, less than ten minutes and it's available at these two URLs and this information, um, like I said, is available, um, to, uh, in the, as a PDF to the city and we can, uh, make that available so that that could be posted and shared, uh, broader than, uh, outside this evening. So that's it, um, for the slideshow and I'd be happy to answer any questions there may be.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That was very complete and we appreciate it and we will have our public, um, comment period at our December tenth meeting. So you gave us an overview, I believe.
Um, we're gonna ask that you open this for our public hearing tonight as well. So we'll have a couple of opportunities.
Okay. I didn't see that on the agenda here. All right. Um, so are there any questions from council about the information?
I have a question. Um, I was told that there was a, a local survey done, um, in the last, mm, year, just, just after our, um, our rancher operated transit had ended. Um, quite a bit of activity happened here in Blue Lake to try to find what other options that might be available. And there was a survey done. And I don't know if you are in possession of that survey or if you can say, uh, make any comments about that survey or what information, um, you've been able to glean from that and how, how that may or may not be affecting this process.
Yeah, I, um, I don't know much about that survey. Um, it was, it's not a survey I'm in possession of. It may have been done. I think it was done by HTA, but that's the extent of my knowledge of it. Um, it's not something I have, I have access to.
Any other questions from council? Okay, so we are opening up a public hearing at this point. I will do so by asking folks to weigh in if they'd like on our unmet transit needs for the year. Yes.
Hello, I am Sandy Bennett. I live here in Blue Lake.
Could you speak into the microphone?
You, you can pull it down.
Yeah, just pull, sorry.
Um, I'm Sandy Bennett. I live here in Blue Lake. I was, uh, one of the ones that started up that survey. It, the, the survey was given to, uh, uh, to the city manager. So she, um, yeah, we had that meeting, uh, when, uh, Brad Pitt, Brad Pratt, um, came, came and, um, the survey will be available to the council and to you. Um, I'll work that out soon. And so I want you to know that there is a survey that was done here in Blue Lake.
And did you say that there were about a hundred people? And did you say that there were about a hundred people that were surveyed?
Yeah, there was about a hundred people surveyed.
And how did that survey get distributed? Was it, uh, people came to the resource center to fill it out or you went door to door?
I went, not only to the door, we stood out in front of Murphy's and, um, um, people, uh, filled out the survey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Any other public on this item? Lori Ponte? I think she forgot to put her hand down before.
Oh.
It's been up for a while. Right, yeah. Okay, we'll move on then to Julie. Did you have a comment about the unmet transit needs?
Yes, um, thank you for acknowledging Zoom. Um, it, our, our presenter, um, it, it reduces transit, parking, that's a big topic in this county. It helps for everybody that's working in family and disability. So I really, I really appreciate our presenter at the beginning. Being able to really appreciate that and, um, be able to screen share with us. And thank you, Elise, for having discussion and our prior speaker. Um, and then back to the presentation. Thank you for giving like public comment period disclosure. Thank you very much for doing that. Um, I'm really excited to see some really productive representation that we're going to have from our city going into HCOG here shortly. And I, I, they're given, HCOG's been given a lot by the county to oversee. And I really am excited to see where this goes and I'm excited to have, um, some really motivated participation in that. And I think that Access Humboldt, they have all the HCOG meetings. That's how I get to listen as I clean and do stuff on my farm, um, and keep up. I really appreciate that. So if anybody's curious what's been going on in this process, Access Humboldt has all the recordings. And they could use a lot more public speakers, just to be honest. Some speakers along the way have disclosed why ridership has been down. Joanne McGuery from Arcata, she's an avid transit user and speaker for a lot of public, um, transit stuff throughout, throughout Arcata and Eureka. And I just feel like, how can we keep this feasible with the lower fees and going hydrogen? And I, I'm just, you know, the grid, everything that we're going with these goals with transit, I think it does need a lot of review. But at the same time, I really appreciate this presentation. I think it's an important time to take advantage of public comment period. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment on our unmet transit needs? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And back to council. Uh, I guess we fulfilled our duties there, so.
Mayor Jones, can I just clarify to you that the survey that, um, Sandy was referring to?
Yes.
Um, that played a big role in our relationship with HTA and getting the Willow Creek route. Um, and they are using that survey and that data to look at microtransit and to look at other programs. So that survey was really valuable. Um, it was disseminated amongst, um, transit operators and staff. And, um, I just wanted to make sure that that was recognized, that the, um, the work from that survey hasn't been lost by any means. And it is, um, kind of an ongoing tool that's being used to, to look at additional ridership options.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we will move on then to item six, presentation and adoption of City of Blue Lake fiscal year twenty twenty-three audit, presentation and action. Brett Jones, auditor from JJACPA, will present the final draft audit for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Upon presentation, the council may choose to accept the audit via motion. So do we have Scott here this evening? Oh, Brett, I'm sorry, Brett.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
All right, great. Thank you very much for having me on the call tonight. Uh, yeah, so I'm presenting the final draft of the financial statements. Uh, last month's meeting, we presented a draft of the report, so we're coming back with the final. As I mentioned last time, we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. And, and you can find it on the first page of the report. It states in our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly. In all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities, business site activities, each major fund and aggregate, aggregate remaining fund information of the city. So as part of the audit, our responsibilities are to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatements, whether due to fraud or error. Uh, reasonable assurance is a high level but not absolute assurance. In performing the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, we exercise professional judgment and maintain professional skepticism. That is to say, we are independent of management of the city. Uh, we identify the risks and material misstatement of the financial statements and design and perform procedures to address those risks. Our procedures, uh, typically, typically consist of testing transactions and balances in the financial statements. Uh, additionally, we obtain an understanding of the, of the internal controls relevant, uh, to the city, a report on any findings that we may have. We evaluate the appropriateness of accounting policies used and conclude if there's any conditions that raise substantial doubt about the city's going concerns. Uh, the biggest difference between this report and the previous one is the inclusion of management's discussion and analysis on pages four to fourteen. Uh, the per- purpose of the M- MDNA is to provide analysis of the government's financial activities in a narrative form. Uh, this section is prepared by management. We do not prefer this section and is a good, uh, uh, good section of the report to, to read first. Uh, government financial statements are prepared under a dual basis of accounting. That is, we have the government-wide financial statements. Starting on page seventeen, these are prepared, uh, under the full accrual basis of accounting. And then we'll have the fund financial statements starting on page twenty-two. These are prepared under a modified accrual, uh, more similar to a cash basis. Then after the financial statements themselves, there are the notes. These just provide additional information about financial disclosures and cities' policies. Uh, in addition to the audit and financial statements, we are, we issue a communications letter, uh, to the city council. This letter has additional information about the audit. It highlights management's responsibilities. Uh, any uncorrected or correct misstatements that we may have had, uh, which we had none, um, that would be in that letter. So we did have one reportable finding. Uh, this is a continuation of the one we had last year, which is just, uh, uh, involves timeliness of the report. The state requires the financial statements to be completed and filed within one year at the end of the fiscal year, and we've gone past that date now that it's, uh, November. So, uh, there's, that was the only finding uh, that we had. Overall, uh, the audit went very well, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the city council may have.
I was happy to see that, um, our citywide revenues increased by about six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and expenses decreased by about four hundred and seventy-five thousand. So that was good news, I thought. Um, how are we doing for getting the next audit, um, done in a timely manner?
Um, that, uh, we'll, we'll talk to management of the city, uh, talk to Amanda and get it, get it on the schedule, so. So once we get this one wrapped up tonight, we'll go ahead and start on the next one.
Sounds good. Thank you. Other questions from the council? Any comments from staff concerning the audit?
No, just that, um, we are going to roll right into the next audit and, um, our goal is to, um, complete this in a timely manner. Um, Scott is, uh, working. We've done a lot of work over the years to try and get ourselves to a point where the audits are, uh, are more routine for us to, to prepare. And, um, I think we're, we're getting there. Um, a lot of our issues revolve around the fact that we have a contract accountant and Scott is stretched really thin with his other duties. Um, so Brett is great at being able to prepare, um, you know, the, the audit side, um, that he focuses on. And really our hang-up has been more of, um, the MDNA side, final reports, review of the final financials. So, um, we're hoping to, um, to not have the same issue next year.
Thank you. Um, we need to accept the audit, uh, audit, uh, with a motion and a second, is that correct? Okay, all right. Um, so this is an action item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to ask questions about the audit? Julie?
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, you're welcome always to make that motion and then open it up to discussion. Then public knows what they're making decision on. I think this is an easy clear acceptance of our audit. It's, it's well-do. Thank you, staff, for getting the needed information in to them. Um, I'm just curious, though, are we going, is this why we're advertising as a new finance manager? Um, is Jackson and Ecklin going to step down from here? That could maybe be a discussion later in reports. You don't have to reply to that now. But I'm just curious if the two tie in together as all. And thank you, um, for your, um, service to our city. Uh, my family has always very much appreciated the services of Jackson and Ecklin. And so thank you again.
Thank you. Any other comments or public input on this item? Okay, we'll come back to council for a possible, uh, first and second and a vote. Mandy, how long does it take to put an audit together on average? Do you know? Or maybe Brett can answer that?
Brett's probably better at answering that. He does all the work behind the scenes while we're working every day. So, um, Brett, maybe you can answer that?
Uh, start to finish, uh, there's a lot of back and forth, so that's what really adds the, to the time of the audit. We can usually, if everything's prepared and we have, uh, a, a quick review, we could usually wrap it up in about a month or two.
Okay.
Start to finish, yeah. That's probably the average.
Okay, thank you.
I like to say thanks, Brett, for all the breakdown in this one, too. There's a lot of explanation there that's, that's in there. I like that.
Okay, so we'll entertain a motion to accept the audit.
So moved?
Second.
Motion made by Elise Gafani, seconded by Christopher Edgar to accept the audit. Any further discussion from council? Any discussion from public? Back to council for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. All right, item seven. Yeah, thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
And staff. Um, we are on item seven, battery storage project information. Presentation by Redwood Coast Energy Authority. And in April of two thousand and twenty-four, the city reclaimed control of the former Blue Lake Power Plant site. This property has been leased to Blue Lake Power for over thirty years. The property was reclaimed through a legal court proceeding, which essentially served as a tenant eviction. For the last several years, the city has been planning for the eventual reclamation of the property, as well as acknowledging that the city was most likely be left with a large-scale cleanup obligation. The city has been estimating the cleanup of the site to cost approximately one million dollars and has been factoring this into ongoing development plans. The city has undergone a large-scale master planning exercise to identify development opportunities in the Powers Creek District, including the former plant site. The city received funding from EDA to conduct an economic analysis for the development of an RV park and campground, as well as other support economies. Through this process, the city identified the opportunity to repurpose the existing transformer and substation on the power plant site for a battery storage project and design into the RV park and campground project the estimated footprint of this development. The city has been working with Redwood Coast Energy Authority for several years to evaluate future options for the power plant infrastructure and has signed, uh, MOU with RCEA to assist the city in attracting battery storage and other renewable projects to the site. The city has evaluated the installation of a large-scale solar project, and it was deemed infeasible due to the cost of the installation and the fact that the installation would not be large enough to be economically feasible. Recently, the city was approached by Power Transitions regarding a battery storage project known as B-E-S-S or BES. The company is proposing to purchase six acres of the power plant property to install a two-phase BES project. Phase one would include a twelve megawatt BES, and the second phase would increase the project to a hundred megawatts?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yes. Under the proposal, Power Transitions would appraise the city's property. And using the value of the land and infrastructure would reduce the purchase price by the cost to fully clean up the property, including removal of the existing plant infrastructure, buildings and fuel pile. The city would be paid the residual value of the land. Cleanup of the site will allow the city to move forward with recreation development in the district and will lift the current liability associated with the existing plant and the environmental impacts associated with the continued degradation of the site. The battery storage project is consistent with the zoning for the property, and issues related to noise can be mitigated to meet the noise standards established for the zone and the eventual rezoning of the site. Environmental issues related to BES projects include the potential for fire. The proposed BES project would meet all NFPA and building code standards, including container suppression systems. Power Transmissions is proposing a lithium-ion phosphate project. This is a newer technology, and to date, this technology has recorded zero fires associated with the systems. Options to address concerns related to the sale of city-owned property include deed restricting the property to limit future development, as well as granting the city the right of first refusal to purchase the property in the event that the company decides to sell. Future rezoning of the property could further protect the development potential of the property to ensure future development meets the objectives of the city. A BES project will allow the city to repurpose the existing power infrastructure, will clean up the property for additional development, and will allow the city to participate in meeting renewable energy goals for our region and community. In order to provide information to the community regarding the project proposal, along with information regarding battery storage systems and their place in our regional renewable energy portfolio, Richard Engel from Redwood Coast Energy Authority will be in attendance to answer questions about battery storage, current and future energy procurement through RCEA, as well as the future of grid stabilization and energy resiliency. So we have from Redwood Coast Energy Authority, someone in attendance?
Oh, hello.
Hi, welcome.
Yeah, so, um, I wanted to introduce Richard Engel. He is, um, on RCEA's procurement side. Um, and he's been a longtime, um, advocate, uh, developer and, uh, uh, scientist and inventor of renewable opportunities in our community and the region. Um, formerly from the SHOTS Energy Lab at Cal Poly Humboldt. Um, he has a wealth of knowledge, and I thought it would be helpful as we continue to have this conversation to, uh, ask Richard to be able to come in and, and provide some information about, um, BES opportunities, where they're being utilized in our community, um, and kind of what they look like for the, um, environmental kind of footprint of our region as we start to move forward. Um, so, uh, he was very gracious in doing the same presentation at our planning commission meeting. Um, we had a really good, uh, uh, conversation and some dialogue. And so he was kind enough to be able to come back and present again to the council and to the community. And I know he's, um, always, um, open to questions and, um, he's a great resource for our community. And he's been a great resource for myself and city staff as we kind of look forward to, you know, what our options would be for the PowerPoint site, so.
Okay, thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Um, I laughed a little bit when I came in and picked up the agenda because, um, when I was leaving the office this evening, one of my coworkers said, "Oh, good luck with the presentation, Blue Lake." And I said, "Actually, it's not a presentation. I'm just going to answer questions." And then I walk in and pick up the agenda and it says, "Presentation." So, um, I do not have a prepared presentation, um, but I'm happy to answer your questions. I can just give a little bit of background on why energy storage is of interest to RCEA. Um, we, um, uh, have a goal that our board has set to, um, to get a hundred percent of the electricity that we provide to Humboldt County from renewable sources and to get as much of it as possible locally. Um, and so we've been striving to do that, um, and have, you know, a pipeline of projects under development. Um, I was really excited this past week to see that the, uh, that's I was really excited this past week to see that the solar panels have been delivered for the project on Sun Valley property on Foster Avenue, just outside of Arcata City limits. So that project is really moving ahead, and that's one that includes solar and storage. We really strive, and it's in our strategic plan, to have a diversified mix of renewable resources in our portfolio. And so, you know, we hope that our portfolio in the future will be, you know, a rich mix of, you know, small hydro, biomass, solar, wind, geothermal, all of these, you know, less environmentally harmful resources. Having said that, though, we find time and time again that solar projects tend to be the least expensive to develop and the easiest to get permitted among those different technology types. So, you know, that really kind of encourages, nudges us towards doing solar where we can. But the big problem with solar, especially in California, is that there's really a glut of it on the grid now. California's kind of been almost overly successful at getting solar deployed so much that now, in the middle of the day, a lot of that solar winds up getting denied access to the grid. It actually gets curtailed, these large utility scale solar projects across the state, and that's become an increasing problem over the last few years. The pretty obvious answer to it is energy storage. So you can store that excess energy that's coming from the sun in the middle of the day and put it onto the grid at other times of day when it's needed. Again, there's a diversity of technologies for storage out there, and some of them are really interesting technologies, like, you know, pumped hydro storage, where you can have reservoirs at two different levels and move water back and forth between them, or you can move big heavy weights up and down. And there's companies developing all of these technologies. But again, batteries tend to be the easiest to permit and the cheapest to deploy. So, you know, just trying to be fiscally responsible and, you know, keep electric rates low for our ratepayers. You know, solar coupled with energy storage tends to be the most attractive solution, although we hope to keep, you know, diversifying into those other technologies as our finances permit and as can get permitted here in Humboldt County. We do get some of our power from biomass, and historically, there have been three biomass plants in the county. And, you know, when we first started our program in 2016, 2017, we got offers from all three of the plant operators to provide biomass power. We immediately went into contract with the Scotia Plant Humboldt Sawmill Company, which just, you know, had kind of the winning offer in terms of price and other terms that worked well for us. And, you know, their plant was fully up and operable. Shortly after that, we also got into contract with Fairhaven Plant on the Samoa Peninsula and took power from them for a couple of years. The plant eventually just stopped operating, and we let our contract with them lapse. To this day, we continue to get power from the Scotia Plant, so that's been eight years. We've been doing that now. And the Blue Lake Plant, you know, did give us an offer, but we just, you know, didn't have very attractive terms from that. And we, there was a lot of community pushback on taking power from the Blue Lake Plant, just kind of based on, you know, their history with the community. So that, that just never happened. We've had our eye on these no longer operating biomass plants because in the utility industry, just interconnection capacity in itself is a really valuable asset. And we recognize that here were two locations in the county that had, you know, more than 10, 10 to 20 megawatts of interconnection capacity available at them, and that's so much faster and less expensive than starting a new greenfield power project and having to develop that interconnection from scratch. So just for years now, we've been thinking, well, we'd really like to find ways to get the Fairhaven and Blue Lake Plants to be doing some kind of energy project and battery storage seemed kind of the most obvious, most viable solution there. So much so that we actually even got into contract with Fairhaven under their current owner, who leased part of the property to an energy company that actually got started on developing a battery project. Unfortunately, they wound up deciding they had to terminate that contract with us because they just came up against some really unexpected challenges, both in cost and timeline for getting the project online. So we're kind of back to square one with Fairhaven and looking for alternative ways to get a storage project developed there. Very interested in Blue Lake for the same reason, and we're actually hoping by the end of December to have a solicitation out that will be looking for local energy storage projects. We're aware of at least one other company that has their eye on a number of different other sites other than biomass plants around the county, and has been in touch with us about potentially doing projects as well. So we think we'll get a pretty strong response to the solicitation when it comes out. And we do hope to see something we can contract with for the Blue Lake biomass site. It seems to align with a lot of the city's interests, and we've had this memorandum of understanding with the city going back a couple of years now with an eye towards making that happen. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
So this presentation we have in our packet is what you presented at the planning commission?
No, that was the one that was presented to you guys by Power Transitions.
Okay.
From two weeks ago.
Right.
Yeah, we don't have any relationship with Power Transitions.
Right, so what did you, what did you present at the planning commission?
I really didn't have a presentation. I kind of came in and did what I'm doing this evening.
Kind of the same.
Really came in to just prepare to answer questions, and so I had a pretty lively conversation with the, with the planning commission and just here to answer questions, really.
Okay, and then you mentioned something about the Sun Valley property that is now being developed for solar, and they have battery storage at that site too. Can you give me an idea of what the percentage of the storage is versus the actual array of solar panels?
Sure. So it's a two-phase project, but the phases are pretty compressed together. So at this point, it looks like they're, they're really going to get brought online at pretty much the same time or within a month or two of each other. And that should be by the first few months of next year. Because like I say, the equipment's already on site. They've got all their permits and everything. So they're, they're very close to being a live project. It's going to be seven megawatts of solar and two and a half megawatts of battery capacity. Kind of the industry standard for battery energy storage projects is to size them so that they can discharge their power to the grid for four hours continuously per day. And so that project is sized, so it can do that. So the two and a half megawatts makes it similar in size to the existing battery storage system up at the airport. That's part of our Redwood Coast Airport microgrid.
And what's the acreage of that, do you know?
The whole site, it's the portion of the Sun Valley property that this is being built on is approximately 30 acres. Solar projects typically take four to five megawatt, I'm sorry, four to five acres for each megawatt of capacity. So the seven megawatts times four plus acres, about 30 acres altogether.
Thanks, Richard. Thank you. So, yeah. Do they have a seven megawatt connection out there?
They're developing it. They actually just put in the polls for it. I just saw, I just saw those freshly installed last week. So part of that falls to PG&E and part of it falls to the developers. So the developer has done their polls, and so they're basically waiting for PG&E to come through and do the utility side of the interconnection.
So there wasn't any sort of interconnection there before?
No, that's a new, yeah, built from scratch interconnections.
Do you happen to know how long it took them to get permitted through QISO?
It's actually not through QISO. They just had to work with PG&E because of the scale of it. So smaller scale projects like this in the airport microgrid just do a generation interconnection agreement with the local utility, in this case PG&E. If they're above a certain size, then they, then they have to do a QISO interconnection.
Oh, so do you know what that, what that line is?
I don't know that it's a hard and fast line, but I think it's, I think in the, in the neighborhood of 20 megawatts. But I'll have to get back to you on that. I don't, I don't think it's just like a set megawatt amount. I think it partly depends on like the local distribution infrastructure.
And that's strictly for generation, so it wouldn't apply to us with those battery storage?
Yeah, the same things, because you're, you're basically doing the same thing as generation, which is pushing power into the grid when the batteries are discharging.
Oh, is that what Power Transitions was talking about when they're talking about the expedited permitting process? But that, I thought they were talking about, it is with.
I don't know. I haven't really had any in-depth conversation with, in fact, I haven't talked to Power Transitions at all. My colleague Jocelyn Nguyen has been our point of contact with them. So I know that they have told her that they think they have a pathway to this expedited interconnection. We're just a little bit skeptical about that because that was what Fairhaven folks thought, and they came up against a brick wall with QISO, and QISO said, no, you have to go back and get in line and do a fresh interconnection because it's been more than three years since your plant's been online. And I know it's been much more than three years since Blue Lake was online. So just based on what we heard with Fair, I mean, we even wrote a letter to QISO, you know, endorsing the project and basically pleading the case on the developers' behalf to, to, you know, let them skip having to go back to square one on interconnection with Fairhaven, and QISO was not open to that.
Interesting. So you mentioned that sometimes during the day, some of these generation projects, the big industrial sized ones, so the power is actually not getting onto the grid. It's just being generated and going nowhere?
That does happen, you know, during certain hours of the day, you know, especially in the spring is like the most common time for that to happen. Because what happens is the days get longer and there's more sun available, and the skies clear up, and the heat hasn't really hit yet, so you don't have a lot of air conditioning load across the state. So the springtime is when the sun is, you know, solar is generating a lot, and the load hasn't gotten that big yet. So that's when the, that's when you see the most of this curtail, or they call it. So, yeah, it's becoming, each year, you can look on the QISO website and see, they have like graphs you can look at that show how much that's been increasing year over year over year to where it's like, I don't know, hundreds of megawatts at the middle of the day that are getting denied access to the grid. And so the good news is that storage has really accelerated coming onto the grid in the last couple of years. And I was talking to the planning commission about this last week, how the previous couple of summers before this last summer, you know, we'd had these real close calls where we'd almost had, you know, rotating outages and rolling blackouts because the grid was being strained to its limits. And this last summer was kind of a skate because so much storage has come online now that it really was getting us through. And if you looked at graphs of which, they'll show like these stacks that show, you know, all the different resources that are online, and the battery part has gotten really, really big just in the last two years, enough so that the batteries were kind of the savior that got us through not having even really a threat of outages this last summer.
So the batteries are going to help with the containment and the rolling runoff and stuff?
For sure, yeah. Right, it lets, it lets us put more of that solar energy into the grid so it doesn't go to waste, and it reduces the risk of outages.
So one concern that was brought up at the special meeting two weeks ago was the potential noise of the battery storage systems. And I'm wondering if you or anyone from RCA has actually visited these new storage systems with the, with the ion lithium phosphate batteries? And if you can speak at all to the potential noise concern? Are the presentation that we heard, it was, it was noted that, that the new battery systems are not nearly as noisy, but I'm wondering if you can speak to that at all?
Right, I have not been to visit a lithium iron phosphate installation yet. The, you know, biggest sized storage systems so far in the county are the one right here at the Rancharia and the one at the airport. So I've been in proximity to those when they're operating, and they're, I think, quiet. So I don't really think there's much of a noise issue to be concerned about. And if the newer batteries are quieter than those old, you know, kind of old school, if you will, lithium ion batteries, then that's probably good news.
Thank you. Other questions from council? Anyone from public would like to speak on this? Would staff like to make a presentation?
Yeah, I was just gonna see, Richard, would it be possible for council members or, and/or community members for us to arrange maybe like a site visit? I was thinking to the microgrid at the airport, just to kind of get an idea of what these battery packs look like and just kind of, just see how they're in operation throughout the community. Or I know that the Rancharia has a battery pack, St. Joe's has one, Mativer Hospital. You guys have one at the airport, and I wasn't sure if that's an option.
Yeah, we do have site tours for different interested groups at the airport microgrid. I can talk to Dana Boudreaux, my colleague, who's the project manager for, for the airport microgrid, and ask him to contact you.
Yeah, that would be great. And then maybe we could put something out to the community and see if people would be interested in taking a tour, just getting a little more, more familiar with these options.
Great.
Happy to, happy to help with that. And I can get back to you about the cutoff between which projects need QISO permitting and which don't. I should know that, but I don't actually know the cutoff.
So are there any theories about how, how battery, increased battery storage may affect solar generation? Or are we going to get to a place where there's enough and they're not going to allow more? You know, are they, I mean, is there, it sounds like maybe we've already started to hit a place with generation, solar generation, where they don't want more?
Don't want more solar or don't want more?
Don't want more solar generation.
I think as long as we keep, well, the expectation is that electric demand is going to really skyrocket in the next couple of decades, partly because of things like, you know, Bitcoin and AI, you know, data centers, you know, that are going to be supposedly growing all over the place. But also just the goals that we have for electrification, you know, charging more electric vehicles, and then, you know, getting gas furnaces replaced with heat pumps and all these things that RCA works on. So we're expecting, you know, electric load is only going to increase over time. And so to keep up with that, we expect to keep deploying new generation, and there's no reason it can't be solar as long as we keep deploying enough other technologies that offset that big hump in the middle of the day. You know, that can be load shifting, you know, to get more electric load happening during the middle of the day when there's that excess electricity, and there's, you know, there's whole programs, these virtual power plants and things that are, you know, trying to shift load to the times of day when it's needed. It can be more batteries for energy storage, can be all those other alternative storage technologies that I was talking about earlier. So I don't think that we're going to see like a hard limit to like, oh, no more solar on the grid. We just have to keep complementing it with other technology approaches that, that make it so it's not just, you know, a big bump in the middle of the day that nobody can use.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Were they out there in Samoa with old SPI, were they ever approached about putting batteries there out there? Because they have massive transition lines there.
Yes, you're right. I'm trying to remember if I ever heard of a proposal. Yeah? I didn't know who currently owned it.
Pretty sure it's Bob Vegas.
Right, okay. I have, I have not heard a proposal for a battery project there. I, I mean, nothing serious. There was one, one of the developers who was briefly, you know, partnering with RCA on offshore wind was in town again recently and was really interested in potential sites around Humboldt Bay that could be used for energy storage. And I drove him around and showed him some sites, and we talked about, about the Sierra Pacific site as potentially being one of those, and he seemed really intrigued, but that was just sort of a looky, looky-loo kind of thing.
Well, it's still operational because if, that's where all our power comes from, is right there. I guess we're the big power transition or high, super high tensile lines. So I was thinking like, why couldn't we go dig something big going out there?
Coastal Commission. There's a hand raised. Julie, would you like to speak to this matter?
Um, yeah, I'm scrambling in, you guys. Thank you, Christopher, for your last comment. Angela, Elise, thank you. I'm listening and I'm trying to get back on some stuff that's productive. I do appreciate having Elise on RCA. I get to listen to the meetings. I've been promoting since the ozone that we are working on some power regenerative sources for our city within that zone. Working on some power regenerative sources for our our city within that zone. And it's too bad we can't, you know, focus on the biomass again. I don't think there's been a lot of research done in it. Much as RCA wants to clamp down on Sosha, you know, Anderson. And Weaverville, they've they've got some plants that I think that, you know, we missed out on this three-year window. All this stuff is very strategically planned and I'm not gonna. Sid, I'm sorry, my pup's barking. He's, I'm just walking by. I'm trying to get someone's bite to talk to you guys. I'm sorry. But we have. I'm not gonna go down this tangent. I'm just gonna say that the climate action plan does not support what RCA can support for this county. Period. We know that. Where is PG&E gonna be resourcing this power from and storing it here? Okay, we're dealing with a bunch of cleanup that we need to get done. I do support, probably we're gonna have to put the battery operation in there to get the cleanup done. We waited too long. We can't refab the buildings. We wasted a lot of funds and time and outsourcing. And I just really hope that we can clean this up in a quick way. That we're moving forward in a productive way, but the loss of time and funds. Honestly should be under scrutiny and I I know everybody else goes that way. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments for Richard? Thank you so much for coming out again to Blue Lake and giving your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, we're on item eight, City of Blue Lake Housing Element Presentation. The city planner Gary Reese will present the final draft of the City of Blue Lake Housing Element along with the accompanying. Sequo analysis on November eighteenth, twenty twenty four. City staff presented the final draft housing element to the planning commission. Including the draft sequo analysis, at which time the planning commission made a formal recommendation for adoption to the city council. Staff is proposing to present the final drafts for the council and community's review. And will be seeking adoption of the document at the council meeting on December tenth, twenty twenty four. The process of updating the housing element has taken over three years. And has included numerous community meetings, town hall presentations. As well as direct outreach to local resource agencies and individual meetings to address community member concerns. The city has received state funding to complete the update and adoption process. And the final adoption will achieve compliance with state mandates. So our city planner Gary Reese is here this evening. Thank you for being here.
I was going to do a combination. Of going through the staff report that I provided as well as doing a PowerPoint presentation. So if we could have a few moments to get the PowerPoint going.
No, it'd be great.
I don't feel it back here. Okay, we're ready to resume.
Right, looks like we're ready. Good evening, council members. Thank you. For those who don't know, I'm Gary Reese. I work as a consulting city planner to the City of Blue Lake and SHN. Firm I work for provides both planning and engineering services to the city. Thank you for that introduction, Mayor Jones. The staff report that I provided in addition to what you read goes into a little more detail on what you summarized and I'd like to kind of go over a little bit of that. Before I begin the PowerPoint presentation. So for those who aren't aware, state law requires cities in Humboldt County to update their general plan housing elements every eight years. This is referred to as a housing element planning cycle. And the current cycle is for the two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty seven planning period, which is called also the sixth cycle. And as noted, the city did receive funding from two state funding sources to work on this. The first funds were received in two thousand twenty one. So we have been working with the planning commission and others on this for, as you noted, about three years. There is a draft housing element update available on the city's website as noted in the staff report. This draft has been reviewed by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. They've determined that it's. Substantially compliant with state housing law and instructed us to move forward with the adoption process. As noted in the letter that I provided in the packet, they've also instructed the city that after adoption, there's. An implementation program that needs to happen before they will actually certify the element. And so that's that's detailed in the letter that they provided. So after we got that letter from HCD, we began moving forward with the process and worked on a sequo documents. A document of the California Environmental Quality Act. To analyze the potential environmental impacts of adopting the housing element update. And if you've had a chance to look at it, it's concluded in that draft initial study, it's found that the housing element update would not have a significant. Effect on the environment and because of that, staff is recommending. That a determination of negative declaration would be the appropriate sequo determination for adoption of the housing element update. So since we've gotten HCD review on the housing element update, we've completed and circulated a sequo documents. The planning commission was ready to make a recommendation and as you noted, did so at their November eighteenth meeting. They were recommending that the housing element update draft be adopted by the city council as well as the recommended sequo negative declaration. And so also, as you noted, we're proposing that a. Public hearing be held by the city council at their special meeting on December tenth. To consider adoption of the housing element update and its sequo document. So in anticipation of the meeting, we wanted to. Basically put this on the the agenda tonight to provide council members and the public an opportunity. To review the draft housing element update to provide public comment and to ask questions of staff. So yeah, that's that's basically it for the staff report that I provided. Why don't we go into the PowerPoint presentation? So this presentation kind of gives some background on the housing element update process. Talks about what the housing element update proposes and also discusses a little bit about. Sequo and the difference between a plan level versus project level review, which was a comment that came up several times. Before the planning commission. Can we go to the next slide, please? So this right here is the logo for the California Department of Housing and Community Development. This is the primary agency whose job is to implement state housing law and to enforce state housing law. They actually have a housing accountability unit whose job is to enforce housing law if jurisdictions aren't aren't following. Next slide. So then we also have the Humboldt County Association of Governments. So this is the local joint powers authority or agency. That is composed of all the local jurisdictions and it's their job as part of the housing element update process. To figure out what the regional housing need is and work with HCD in the local jurisdictions to assign it to the various cities in the county. So they're the ones who essentially put out the report that provides what they call the regional housing allocation. Next slide, please. So before getting to the sixth cycle housing element update. I'd like to give a little bit of history about the city. Compliance with the requirement to update the housing element every planning cycle. And so this slide here shows you the cover of the. Housing element update that was prepared for the the last cycle, the fifth cycle. And as it notes here, in nineteen eighty six was the first time that the city adopted housing. And then in nineteen ninety two was the first time the city got certified. And then in two thousand four, the city also got certified, but that was the last time. So it's been twenty years. And that is problematic nowadays because they have become more punitive or jurisdictions that haven't done this. So in two thousand nine, the city adopted its housing element. But it wasn't able to achieve certification from the state because there were certain things that the city wasn't willing to do. That the city council wasn't willing to do. So in two thousand fifteen, we also did a draft. It was reviewed by HCD and we got a number of comments from them. But the city wasn't able to achieve compliance at that time either. Can I get the next slide, please? So I've been asked this question a number of times over the years. What are the consequences of noncompliance with state housing law? And one of the biggest ones is the city could be sued. So that could be by the state. Or that could be by housing advocacy groups. The city has received public public records act requests. From groups like YMB Law, folks like that. Which has been concerning, but they've never followed through with anything. They've simply just done their due diligence to see what the city has done compliance wise. Another consequence is a city could be denied grant funding. Which is problematic for a small city like Blue Lake who relies very heavily on grant funding from the state. Another consequence is the state could take away local control. So some of us may have seen this with ADU law where essentially there's no planning review at all for ADUs going and it's become very easy. There's also other laws like the Housing Accountability Act, which really limits the type of findings a community can make for, say, denying an affordable housing project. So these consequences have only got more severe over time. They kind of ramped up enforcement in the fifth cycle. And they've also done so in the sixth cycle. So there have been lawsuits against jurisdictions for not achieving compliance on their housing elements. There have been lawsuits against jurisdictions for improperly denying housing projects. Uh, next slide, please. So this here is the cover, as you may have seen, our sixth cycle housing element update. Has a kind of a cool picture of the mural in town. Could you go to the next slide, please? This here is the cover of our current regional housing needs assessment for the two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty seven period. As I noted before, this is prepared by HCOG in consultation and coordination with local jurisdictions and the Department of Housing and Community Development. Next slide, please. So right here is a table that shows the city's allocation for the sixth cycle. And so as you can see, they're allocated units by different income levels and the number was twenty three. Next slide, please. So it's important to note, I was noting that the state has become more punitive in how they're dealing with noncompliance. So what you'll see in this table here is we're essentially, the city has been told they have to. Plan for both the fifth cycle and the sixth cycle Rena allocation because it didn't have a compliant or certified fifth cycle housing element. So we were allocated eleven units in the fifth cycle and we had to add that to the twenty three units in the sixth cycle for a total of thirty four. And that's what you'll see in this draft housing element update is what we're planning for here is thirty four units. Next slide, please. So here, this is an important slide just to look at the residential development potential in the city. And to consider what the city had planned for in past housing element planning cycles versus what they're planning for today. So the picture on the left is the west side of town, an area that's owned planned development residential. In the third, fourth and fifth cycles, those were the primary sites the city pointed to to say, this is where we can meet our Rena allocation. I think, you know, this is where the eleven units could go in the fifth cycle, for example, is what we were saying. The state's been a little skeptical of these sites being used over and over. One, because they really haven't been developed. I think we have the Eliasin project, but other than that, there hasn't been much movement on these sites. And when you try and reuse sites over and over in subsequent housing element updates, they basically say, you guys need to come up with better sites. These these aren't being developed and in these cases, as you can see just from this picture, you know, you've got environmental constraints there like. Large wetland areas, drainage, it's things like that which limit development potential. So in their comments on the fifth cycle draft element that we prepared, they really were saying. You guys need to plan better for where you're going to put residential development. You've been trying to regurgitate these sites. Over and over and nothing has happened on them. So that's part of what led into the Powers Creek District planning process. Is we were looking for sites that had better access, fewer environmental constraints, were of sufficient size to allow. You know, residential development, multifamily development, things like that. So rezoning the former business park to opportunity as part of the Powers Creek District planning. Really opened up some sites to have additional residential development potential and truly demonstrate that we had adequate sites in the city. To meet our Rena allocation. And so that's what you'll find when you review the sixth cycle element. Is these sites are far more suited for providing the full range of housing. Not just single family, which Blue Lake mostly has, but also the multifamily, which can fall into the lower or. Very low income categories because the state is requiring that you not just plan for single family. Or above moderate and moderate, you also have to plant for that lower and very low. And typically that happens on larger sites that allow higher densities. Uh, next slide, please. So this here is an important figure that shows you the vacant sites we've identified in the sixth cycle elements. You'll see there is a some vacant sites, South Railroad Avenue on the west side of the city. You've got those three sites I just showed in the Powers Creek District that are zoned opportunity. You got a few mixed use zone sites near downtown and otherwise you have a couple vacant sites that are zoned for single family residential. So that's what we're identifying as the vacant sites where housing can happen and we can meet our Rena numbers. Next slide, please. So here is actually a draft of city, the City of Blue Lake's current zoning map. This is something that was just produced recently and first presented to the planning commission at their last meeting. What this shows is all of the rezoning that happens as part of the Powers Creek District planning. So it shows the opportunity zone amongst all the other current zones in the city. This isn't a map that's been available until recently. Still in draft form, so you know, we're not handing it out and things like that, but I wanted to present it to both the planning commission and the city council. To show, you know, what zoning changes happened there. So you can see in the red. On Gary Johnson's property as well as some of the city-owned property and and other private property, you've got the O there for opportunity. And then you also have some green zoning there that's on X, which is essentially the Levy Trail and the Creek Corridor. Those were previously zoned light industrial and industrial, not great planning that, you know, so we tried to clean that up as as part of that rezoning effort. So we'll be working on this and this will be available on the city's website and it's kind of part of that general plan modernization that I presented on. At a past meeting this year. Uh, next slide. So this right here is an analysis that we have to do in the housing elements where we have to say, here's our Rena allocation. Here's our capacity for ADUs and and junior ADUs. Here's the capacity we have on vacant sites and then is there a surplus? Do we have sites that can not only meet our Rena but also accommodate additional residential development? And what you'll see here is we have a surplus really in those sites in the Powers Creek District for the low and very low income categories. We're showing that we have a surplus of forty two units potentially there. Then we're also showing that we have a surplus of fifteen units in the moderate income category. So that would come from some of the sites on the west side of the city that are larger. And then above moderate, we have a small surplus and really above moderate, you're gonna see those on standard city lots that are zoned for R one. That's what's happened in recent years, folks. Any vacant lot you have in Blue Lake is gonna be developed probably with a nice home. And so the the building permits that we've seen, developments we've seen on those lots definitely fall in the above moderate category. But above moderate is usually one of the harder ones to plan for. You can't guarantee that people are gonna develop those type of units, so folks don't often meet that one. Uh, next slide, please. So this slide here, as well as the staff report I provided, provides a summary of the revisions to the city zoning code. That is proposed by the housing element update. So one of the key things that the update does is it does what I just showed you. It identifies vacant sites where the housing can be built. It also, if needed, proposes revisions to the zoning code. And the city needs these revisions for a variety of reasons. Some of the biggest are inconsistency with state housing law. So these are things that the city has to do, otherwise it could not achieve compliance with the state housing. So starting with the first one, ensuring consistency with current state law. We've got all sorts of, if you look at program HI one in the housing element update, we've got a number of sections of the zoning code that are outdated. By many years. We can't actually implement them as written. that are outdated by many years. Um, we can't actually implement them as written. We as staff have to know what the current state law is and make sure that we're actually implementing that. So these are really cleanup amendments. There's things like, we don't, you know, our ADU regulations are not consistent with state law. Our definition of family, how we treat transitional supportive housing, I could go on and on, look at program HI one. So those are really cleanup amendments that we have to do. The next one is really been one of the big sticking points for the city for the last twenty years with the state. Why we haven't gotten certified housing elements since two thousand four, because the city's been unwilling to do by-right zoning for apartments or multifamily. And essentially, if you look at the zoning map that's in the presentation, um, look at the PDR zone on the west side of the city. That's the one we went back and forth with the state on. You know, they essentially said, you, you, you should upzone this to allow multifamily by right. That's what you need to do to achieve compliance. And past city councils basically said, no, we're not, we don't want an entire zone that allows uh, by right or just a building permit for apartments or multifamily. So what you'll see is we're this time proposing a more creative approach where we would be creating a multifamily combining zone that would be applied to individual properties, not an entire zone, just individual properties on top of the base zoning district. So you still follow all the rules of the base zoning district, but you would be allowed to do sixteen units per acre by right. And I'll describe that a little bit more. I've got some slides that uh, show an example of how that could happen. So uh, also, a, a number of the standards, development standards in the residential zones were written to, it looks like, to make multifamily development difficult. And the state called that out. They asked us to analyze, are these barriers to the development of multifamily housing? And we couldn't really say no, because they are. You know, there were limitations on height and setbacks and things that were different than other zones. So essentially, they were asking, make this consistent, you're not inhibiting apartments and multifamily housing. Uh, also then, um, we have to comply with requirements in government code for objective design standards. We have a site plan approval process that has what are called principles to be followed, and this process is akin to design review. And these principles are, are subjective. They say things like, you know, is this compatible with the neighborhood or the character of surrounding development? The problem with that is it basically creates subjectivity for the decision-makers to decide, in essence, in their opinion, is it consistent with the community, things like that. What the state wants is objective standards that are clear, concise, and developers and the public understand what they have to do. They wouldn't have to go to a public hearing for a conditional use permit and have no idea whether their project's gonna get approved or not. And so that's really the point of requiring objective design standards. So we're gonna have to take those principles to be followed and make them objective, so we're not allowing discretion to be part of that review process. Uh, the last one, uh, we have some design guidelines in our, well, that the city has adopted in the past, but they are just guidelines. And we were advised by past city attorneys that if somebody didn't wanna follow these, they're really not legally enforceable. The problem is, is that some of our zoning code references these guidelines, and it confuses people. They're like, well, are they, it sounds like they're required. It says in the code that these should be followed. So the state's essentially asking that we revise it to make it clear that they're advisory, they're encouraged, they're not required. So those are the primary revisions that the, how, the current housing element update is proposing to the city zoning code to achieve compliance with state housing law. Now, next slide please. Now I'd like to talk a little more about the multifamily combining zone. This is one that's um, generated a lot of interest for folks that have been following this process. Um, this is implementation program HI fourteen. This is the program the state is telling us we have to implement before they will certify this housing element. And so what that means is we have to create this combining zone as a new tool, uh, a new zoning tool in the city's code. And the way it would be used once created is would be applied to individual properties. So for example, you have the Calgon Carbon property there. It's about a two-acre property. If this were applied to that property by right, you potentially do up to thirty-two residential units. So if this were applied, you know, down the road, once it's created in a laser housing element planning cycle, we potentially could show that we're absolutely planning for our lower-income Rena just by that action, by applying that to a single property. Right now, what they're asking is for us to apply that to a site that can allow at least eleven units, because that's our carryover from the fifth cycle. So if you have a carryover nowadays from a prior cycle, they want you to create by-right zoning for those sites specifically. Well, we didn't actually call out specific sites in the fifth site. We just said we have these zones, and this is the amount of residential units that can happen in those zones. So we've talked with them about, well, we have the Powers Creek District, this area has been um, rezoned for the opportunity zone. And we think that's the most appropriate location to apply this, especially because if you look at the bottom bullet, must be applied to sites one acre larger to meet state requirements. There are not that many sites like that in the city. There's maybe some down South Railroad, but as I described before, they're less suitable. So it really would be the Powers Creek District where this would best be applied. Um, although, you know, it will say in there that potentially could be applied to the R3, MU, PDR, and O-based zoning districts. Um, it really looks most suitable for the opportunity zone in the Powers Creek District. And understand, if this was applied, all the development standards of the opportunity zone would still apply, except you would be able to do a density of seventeen units per acre by right. The opportunity zone, actually, the density allows seventeen point four uh, units per acre. So this wouldn't be any denser than what's already allowed in these districts, but it would allow it by right. Uh, can we move on to the next slide please? So, this, I've got the zoning map here just again to kind of show, you know, where's the PDR, it's on the west side of the city primarily. You have your mixed-use kind of around the downtown, you have your opportunity in the Powers Creek District. And you have your R3 uh, just off the downtown and down railroads. So those are potential sites that currently have that zoning where this combining zone could be applied, but as I noted, we really see the Powers Creek District as the appropriate location for this. Next slide please. So um, that's kind of a summary and overview of what's proposed uh, by the housing element update. Next, I'd like to talk about the Sequo process. And as I noted before, the recommendation to the council from the Planning Commission and staff is that the appropriate determination is a sequo negative declaration. We've got a lot of comments from folks saying, well, why isn't there mitigation uh, included? Why isn't this a mitigated negative declaration? Uh, the initial study acknowledges that there's potential impacts from future residential development. And as I'll describe in here, there may be from future residential development, but there isn't from just simply adopting the housing element itself. Um, so here, I'm just kind of breaking down a plan level versus project level analysis under Sequo. Plan level is like what we're doing with the housing element update. It analyzes potential environmental impacts of the implementation of goals, policies, and programs in the plan area. So those implementation programs in the housing element update, that's what the Sequo document is analyzing. Many of them have, well, pretty much all of them have no potential for a physical environmental impact to the environment. It's not making housing happen. It's just simply saying, things should be done, such as zoning code amendments. But when those amendments go to happen, they themselves would be subject to Sequo. So you would get more specific in your analysis as you go through the process. By contrast, project level where you might have mitigation measures, that's analyzing the site-specific environmental impacts of a project. You, you know much more about that project at that time and have the ability to analyze its environmental impacts, and I have a few slides that get into a little more detail on that. Next slide. So again, plan level, I'm just showing the picture of the whole city here, because that's really what we're focusing on in the housing element update. So we're analyzing implementation programs HI one through HI twenty-three. That's what this sequel analysis does for the housing element update. And a negative declaration really is often uh, the most common sequel determination for individual general plan element updates such as a housing element update. For example, most local jurisdictions adopted a negative declaration for their housing element updates. Uh, next slide. And this is uh, some language out of the Sequo document that is provided before um, each resource topic that's analyzed in that initial study. And I think it's a really important statement that helps folks to understand what the housing element update does. And it states, the housing element update is a policy document that does not result in physical changes to the environment, but encourages the provision of housing in areas of the city that are already designated and zoned to allow residential development. While policies could require amendments to the zoning code or result in actions of the city that could cause a physical change, the policies would not result in specific physical changes to the environment. Additionally, any amendments to the zoning code would be subject to project-specific environmental review pursuant to Sequo. So that really explains, you know, what this sequel analysis is doing for something like a housing element update. Uh, next slide. Um, so as far as uh, project level, uh, we've got a picture here of the current uh, site design for the Danko project. So this is what was submitted by their new architects uh, that they're working with. Uh, as some may know, the site has moved to the east uh, to accommodate the bike park. And so in a case like this, where you've got a specific development proposal, you know exactly what they're proposing, how big it is, how tall it is, all the other improvements associated with it, utility connections, that's something that allows you to do a project-specific analysis. And when you do that, you're often requiring the preparation of technical studies. It could be a biological report, a cultural report, a traffic study, a geotechnical investigation, things of that nature, and those uh, reports will often recommend mitigation measures, which then leads to uh, the sequo determination for a project being a mitigated negative declaration. And so for projects that can't found to be exempt either categorically or statutorily under Sequo, it's typically a mitigated negative declaration. And that is the determination that's anticipated for the Danko project based on the technical studies that they've had done. Uh, next slide please. So that concludes uh, my presentation as far as what's in the staff report and that PowerPoint presentation. Um, if I could, I could potentially answer that clarifying question uh, before you guys deliberate.
Are there any questions from council about this?
I had lots of questions.
Yeah, I got.
As you're going through. But I kind of feel like uh, as you go through, I kind of lose track of what it was I wanted to ask you. So could you talk a little bit more about why the two thousand and um, four and then nineteen ninety-two housing elements were not certified?
I believe ninety-two and two thousand four were certified.
Oh wait, sorry, you say, yeah, they are certified. Um, oh nine.
Sure, absolutely. The by-right requirement was one of the primary reasons that certification couldn't be achieved at that time. So in two thousand nine, one of the main comments that came back from HCD is, we really need you guys to choose a zone where you allow multifamily housing by right. And the city council at the time said, no, we don't wanna do that. We want multifamily housing of five or more units at that time. Uh, and in some cases, any multifamily housing to require a conditional use permit. And the state's opinion of that is that's a barrier to development multifamily housing. It creates enough uncertainty in the process that developers may not wanna develop in your community. And so that's the state philosophy on by-right zoning. Um, and that was the reason that both two thousand nine and two thousand fifteen were not going to be certified. As far as adoption though, in two thousand fifteen, adoption didn't even happen, and that was a choice of the council.
Okay.
Um, we got a strategic growth council grant to do that update in two thousand fifteen. And we used the grant to create the draft, it got reviewed by HCD, and then it was, um, you know, the city needed to take it through the adoption process, and the council at the time said, we don't have the resources to do this, so don't do any more work on this. So.
Because we used up the grant and there was no more money?
Basically, yeah.
Okay.
So that was their decision. There was a number of other things that could have moved forward that were done through that grant. And they basically asked staff to provide a list of the most important high-priority items that could be moved forward, and that's what moved forward. Everything else uh, didn't happen.
Okay.
But part of the reason that didn't happen was because the state wasn't as punitive, I hate to use that word, about what we should be doing though. There was more leeway back then.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, they were still.
Or recently now, they're saying, no, it's not what you want, it's what you have to do more or less.
Yeah, the state created the Housing Accountability Unit, which then was tasked with being like, you know, enforcement arm of HCD. So there actually is an individual that lives here locally that works remotely for HCD that's helped to educate us local planners about what that all means. And they have a lot of technical advisory uh, documents that are available on their website that kind of lays out the enforcement actions they've taken against various jurisdictions in the state. So you're, you're absolutely correct. Enforcement was not as serious back then.
Right, and there is actually a city in the Bay Area, I think, who, who didn't comply, and they did take over their planning department.
So that's what, that actually led me, was leading into the question that I was going to ask. I wanted to make sure I understood the consequences of non-compliance when I wrote it down. So on number three, when, okay, so I, I understand number two, right? The city could be ni- could be denied grant funding and, which is considerably problematic for Blue Lake. I mean, we have, we, you know, kind of, that's a hill that we don't need to die on for certain. But um, on number three, where it said the state could take away local control, I wrote down what I understood was that, in essence, the state could potentially come in and put up housing elements without city control. Is that the way I, I understood it, or is that not correct?
I, I personally haven't seen that happen, but it doesn't mean it hasn't. Um, there are ways the state can take away local control under laws like the Housing Accountability Act. You know, if, if you weren't willing to achieve compliance with your housing element update, they in essence would say, fine, then, you know, there's certain actions the state can take to allow projects to happen, even if the community doesn't want them to, for example. Like if the Planning Commissioner Council would deny them, they sometimes will take away that ability, or there's very narrow findings in which they can do so.
Okay.
Uh, I heard that they could, they'll just rezone and make you sell property and stuff like that.
I've seen that happen through lawsuits in Shasta County, where the county was forced to upzone, rezone to allow housing uh, to achieve compliance with state housing law. So yeah, there's, there's a variety of ways people get forced to achieve compliance, you know.
So and, and compliance essentially is through zoning. Um, in other words, if it's, if it's zoned to allow it, we are in compliance, whether it's built or not.
Yeah, compliance would be providing adequate sites with reasonable development standards that doesn't inhibit housing for all. So many jurisdictions such as Blue Lake do have rules that inhibit multifamily housing by design. It's not usually an issue, you're inhibiting, you know, above moderate or moderate. I mean, that's not usually an issue. It's you're, you're inhibiting multifamily or affordable housing, that type of thing. Uh, some of the changes we have to make to the code are to lower the barriers to being able to do multifamily housing in Blue Lake.
So essentially, you're identifying all the vacant buildable properties in town and applying new zoning.
Well, you're identifying them, determining whether they can meet your Rena and the different income levels. And then you're also analyzing your rules for the second part of it, to determine whether you have reasonable development standards.
Okay, let me ask you, um, so say there's a quarter-acre lot somewhere that's vacant and um, there are no environmental barriers to building there. Can somebody go in and put a fourplex on it? Or, I mean, put some multifamily, I mean, like, no matter where it is in town, is that, is that by-right stipulation gonna apply to that lot?
We do have zones that allow up to four units uh, by right. The mixed-use zone does, the opportunity zone does. We already have that. I don't think the state considers fourplexes to be sufficient uh, dense enough or large enough to accommodate affordable housing units uh, affordable to lower-income individuals. That's where the higher densities and the larger site requirements come in.
So even though there's the by-right thing and there's all these changes that are gonna affect a lot of properties, you're saying that the higher-density stuff is not likely to happen on those, on the small ones?
Let's, let's be clear, there's no zoning actions proposed that's gonna change the density um, on any of these sites. They would, essentially all we're doing is saying, here's the vacant sites, here's the zoning, we can accommodate our Rena on it. That's what we're saying. The by-right is the state saying, well, you require a CUP for five or more units on some of these. You need to change that rule. You need to allow by-right either in a zone or through something like a combining zone. But that doesn't change the density per se, such as if it were applied in the opportunity zone. That by-right zoning allowance would still be less than the current density, residential density allowed in the opportunity zone.
Gary, can you just clarify, I think part of the question is that this isn't, we're not changing a lot of the existing zoning. There's, there's already existing zoning for every parcel in Blue Lake. So this isn't creating a combining or overlay for all of the parcels to allow by-right. So there's already, when you talk about R3, R1, R2s, um, O, those are already specific designation, so R3 is more of our multifamily uh, density that's allowed. Like Vance Lake, where we have apartment buildings and things, so can you just clarify that a bit?
I think it'd be helpful to point at the, uh, the map. So as Mandy was noting, I mean, there's a variety of zoning in the city that currently exists, we're not proposing to change any of that. Um, your R three is the highest density zone, it's pretty much mostly built out. Your R two is kind of a duplex or, um, essentially allows duplexes by right. Your mixed-use zone, um, with a use permit would allow five or more units. Opportunity zone with a use permit would allow five or more units. Um, so we're not actually proposing any actions that would change these zones, what we're proposing is to create a combining zone. And what that is, is it's a zoning tool that gets placed on top of individual properties, uh, to allow something different than the base zoning district. In this case, it would simply be using the case of, uh, Calgon Carbon, to apply it on there to allow, uh, buy right residential development. It's sixteen units per acre, every other part of that opportunity zone would still apply, except that one part related to density and the need to get a use permit or not get a use permit. Sure, all the other development standards would apply. So, yeah, we're not looking at changing the zones, we, our zoning is adequate, it's just the buy right requirements. Um, and those, some of the development standards, which do need to be amended. Uh, but the opportunity zone is not one, other than density, we're proposing to change development standards. So is there a more specific information you were looking for in regard?
So the, the buy right overlay is going on specific properties that you've identified?
Yeah, we haven't actually determined which ones, I just use Calgon Carbon as an example, but we need to find a property that accommodated at least eleven units. That's the carryover from the fifth cycle. And that's a more surgical or focused approach than what the state asked us to do, uh, over the past twenty years. Which is take one of your zones, such as PDR, and allow multifamily by right. Well, the problem, the concern of past councils and commissions is that means every property in the city's own PDR allows buy right apartments. That was not a step the city was willing to take. So we chose something like a combining zone, which is a more focused approach. We have this tool, we can apply it to an individual property when we need to demonstrate that we have buy right zoning to accommodate the low income arena. That's really what it's meant to do.
So you essentially have to keep applying it to different properties till you run out of properties?
Going forward for future housing element planning cycles, that could happen, yeah. And then at that point, the state says, okay, well, you've run out of land, annex. Okay, well, if you can't annex, then upzone. So we'll see what happens in the future, but at this time.
Nobody builds anything in all these years?
As long as you don't have, you have adequate sites and you have reasonable development standards, that's all you're asked to do.
Okay, so you're saying that the current twenty-three unit is being met by the Danco, but you want to identify a second?
Only parts of it, um, if they're going to do mostly affordable housing, then that goes to the lower income arena. That doesn't necessarily meet above moderate or moderate, you still have to see that happen.
Well, you just keep identifying, you keep talking about the eleven carryover units, what about the twenty-three current units?
So the twenty-three units, a- as you see, we've identified where they could occur on the vacant sites in the city. That's the whole analysis that happens in the housing element update. So we're showing all thirty-four and where they can be accommodated. There was a table earlier that showed, here's your arena, here's your ADU capacity, here's your sites, and there's actually a surplus.
Okay.
You know, we can accommodate.
I just didn't understand why you kept going back to the eleven carryover.
Because that's what has resulted in the need for the combining zone. We have that carryover and we have to plan for buy right zoning to accommodate that carryover.
We have to essentially implement one of the programs.
We have to implement.
So we can't just, it's not enough just to say it, we have to actually implement one of the programs.
Which is program HI fourteen, related to the multifamily combining zone. So we need to find a site in the city that can accommodate those eleven units and place the multifamily combining zone on there. So that buy right is allowed for, you know, apartments on that site. That's what they're asking before they'll certify this six-cycle housing element.
Gary, can you, uh, distinguish, uh, buy right versus this? Uh, like what are the processes, so? Because it doesn't mean that a developer can just come in and develop a parcel without any process. There's still zoning requirements, so you have your height restriction, set the requirements, your infrastructure, uh, all of that. And your CEQA analysis, all of that has to be applied with, but there's, the difference is the, the use permit process.
Yeah, so when you get a use permit, obviously you have to pay fees, uh, put in an application, a public hearing is held. And it goes before the planning commission for a decision, the public can attend, make comments, all of that. Uh, when it's by right, you're applying for a building permit. And through that process, it's reviewed by planning, for example, to make sure it meets all the development standards, it's an allowable use in the zone, all of that stuff. Um, also, if staff were to see that the site has environmental constraints, like let's say there's a big wetland in the middle of the site. Then typically you're going to refer that to regulatory agencies such as CDFW, the Army Corps, the Water Board, and hear what comments they have. And, you know, they're going to respond and say, well, you know, there's these laws that protect that wetland, maybe they require setbacks, you know, things like that. So if there are environmental constraints or issues that need to be addressed by other entities, and that would be referred out to them. And then the other city departments, obviously, city engineering, public works, review it, uh, for infrastructure improvements, access, things like that. So although, all you need is a building permit, there's still a whole process associated with reviewing it for compliance with local, state, and federal regulations.
Okay.
But it does make it easier if it's by right, you don't have to go to the planning.
You don't have to go to a public hearing before the planning commission, pay those fees, um, yeah, deal with that uncertainty.
Has the state seen, um, how we're allowing accelerated dwelling units to be built in, in people's backyards? And does that go towards our favor in any way? Because that has happened in a few, in a few yards.
So there is a requirement to do an annual progress report to look at implementation of your housing element. It gets submitted, I believe, every April, and so we have to go through the building permit records, that can include ADUs or any other types of housing units. And we have to report to the state, um, you know, what permits are being issued for what, and what income categories we believe they fall in. We also have to look at our programs in our housing, adopted housing element updates, say whether we've achieved these things, or where are we in implementing them, that type of thing. So there's an ongoing reporting process to the state for implementation of housing elements and the issuance of building permits.
Other questions before I open it up to the public? Okay, any public comments or questions?
Yes.
Uh, yeah.
Maybe you give Gary a microphone, need to give Gary a microphone too.
Gary, thank you, that was informative and very efficient, uh, have a very, uh, high. So, um, two quick questions, um, one would be, I think, pretty simply addressed, and that is on the applying the combining zone. We have, um, sections called likely developable, questionable developable, and then unlikely. If you could elaborate, like what's the determinants for each of those categories? And then the second question would be, as we look at the different properties, I know we, you know, ooh, wow, sixteen units, uh, per acre. But let's shrink it down, and for a standard residential lot that may not be developed on, um, it's about sixty by hundred, more or less. How many multifamily units could be on that, just two? Like, you know, like if you had a home in an ADU, or could they develop it until, into six individual units? So when we apply, um, the consideration of, of maximizing on a certain property and a, and a residential one or, and also in the mixed use, uh, number of units on a small size and height on a small size, thank you so much.
May not remember all that.
Yeah.
Um, is it possible we could bring the presentation up and go back to the slides so I can explain that to everybody? And we'd be looking for the slide that showed the vacant sites inventory. So yeah, those are good questions, thank you for that. Um, so back to our vacant sites inventory map, as Kat was noting, likely developable, questionably developable, likely not developable or categories we're showing on this map. So most of the sites are shown as likely developable, that mean they have decent access, they don't have a lot of environmental constraints, and it's likely they could be developed at the density and with the units that we're saying it could in the, uh, site inventory in the housing element update. Now, when you get to questionably developable, there's only one, it's right here off of Applewood Lane, it's very small, it might be t- three thousand square feet or something like that. And just because of its very small size and all the development standards that apply there, they may need variances, who knows? So we call that one questionably developable. Um, as far as likely not developable, there's a number of, uh, vacant sites in the city that are technically vacant. But they might be a big wetland, or they might be a slope like this, or things of that nature. It might be part of the creek, so we call those likely not developable. But the state wants you to go through and give your assessment of how developable are these sites? And when you see the table that goes along with this map, it talks about some of the environmental constraints per site. And we don't always assume the max development potential can happen, that actually is only assumed on a single family lot where you can get one unit. Because to assume anything less would be no development, that'd be weird. So, um, on the other ones, like here in the Powers Creek District. You know, it's anywhere from forty to sixty percent of the actual development potential is assumed to be the realistic development potential. So the state doesn't allow you to say, oh yeah, a hundred percent, this could be developed to the maximum of density allowed by the zoning. Um, as far as your question, it sounded like you were asking about a single family lot, R one zoning and maximum development potential? Okay, so, I'll, mixed use is easy, that's just whatever the density is, it's one unit per twenty-five hundred square feet. So you can have one unit per twenty-five hundred square feet. So that one's simple, uh, single family lots are interesting because of ADU laws. Um, you technically could have up to forty units, um, but not the way you think. It's not going to be four individual units detached from each other, it's going to need to be some combination. It could be like a single family residence that has a junior accessory dwelling unit in it, a converted bedroom. And then the garage, which is attached, also got converted to an attached ADU. And then with that, you could have a detached ADU, when you add it all together, it's technically four units. But really, it's a single family residence, it's a kind of a complex of three units and a detached ADU. Um, so that's kind of the max development potential. We do have, the urban lot split law, SB nine, that allows you to cut a six thousand or five thousand square foot lot in half, doesn't apply in Blue Lake. Many people have inquired about that, Blue Lake's not defined as an urbanized area or urban cluster, those are the areas in which SB nine applies. So to answer it, single family, potentially up to four units.
Even on a six thousand square foot?
Yeah, yeah.
House, attached garage, garage converted to ADU, then secondary ADU.
Detached ADU as well.
So we have garage, uh, detached.
Yeah, basically, just like one house where you have an attached ADU to the house, you have a junior ADU, which can be no more than five hundred square feet. And then you have your detached, so you basically have one structure that kind of has three units in it, and you have a detached ADU. That's, that's one of the ways you can get two, four units on a single family property.
So, hi.
Uh, in the R one zone, it's thirty-five feet. And actually in the mixed-use zone, it's also thirty-five feet. For comparison, um, the retail commercial zone, the downtown, forty-five feet. The city's multifamily R three zone, forty-five feet. The prior zoning in the Powers Creek District, light industrial, sixty feet, and heavy industrial, a hundred feet. So height-wise, the rezoning to opportunity lowered the height from sixty to a hundred, down to forty-five.
So that R one, four-unit scenario that you described is, does that satisfy arena allocation in any way, shape, or form?
It could for ADUs, um, now we projected, I don't know, something like ten ADUs or something like that in a draft of this housing element update, and HCD's review, they said, I'm sorry, you guys have had like one ADU in five years, where you get off saying you have ten in a couple of years. Okay, fine, we put the numbers four, I think, in, in the current draft, and we probably have gotten two already. So, we're, we're well on our way to meeting the four. But, uh, yes, those that we were just describing as additional units on a single family property would count towards the ADUs we projected.
But not a low income or very low income arena?
It depends, it, you know, you have to like, really actually look at what that unit's going for.
Right.
You know, we'll do our research, we'll talk to local retailers, we'll try and figure out, even if we can talk to the property owner, what are you charging? And then we can figure out where it falls in the income categories based on that. These ADUs don't typically go for cheap in Blue Lake, they often end up being moderate, possibly even above moderate, depending on how much they spend on it.
So, um, and does, does whether or not the land o- owner, um, accepts a section eight subsidy have any effect on whether or not that satisfies these lower income?
Well, you have a difference between housing choice vouchers and project-based vouchers. With a project-based voucher, you often have an agreement where it will, it'll stay affordable for a certain period of time. That's something you can count towards the arena. A housing choice voucher is something an individual takes to a landlord and says, you know, I have this, I get this break on my rent, basically. That person can move around with that thing, you can't really count that. You know, but a project-based voucher, which is awarded to a project, and it maintains that affordability for twenty, sometimes cases, you know, fifty years. You can count that, because you have a long duration in which that unit would remain affordable.
What's the shortest duration that one of those things is good for?
Well, like a housing choice voucher, I suppose somebody could have a month to lease it.
Sure, sure, but I mean, a project-based, a project-based, um.
I want to say the contracts are fifteen to twenty years, but affordable housing projects don't just go for project-based vouchers from HUD. They also will go for tax credits from the state, things that, that come with regulatory agreements that guarantee that affordability for fifty to fifty-five years.
Right, I'm just trying to understand what potential there is for, um, smaller landowners that aren't going to do a giant, you know, project like the Danko thing. What's the potential for smaller, um, property owners that have a smaller project in mind to meet any of our arena allocation?
Well, they almost, they almost certainly would probably be able to meet moderate, which is kind of market rate, or above moderate, which are nicer units. That's kind of a given, you know, any unit that's built in Blue Lake is probably going to meet either moderate or above moderate. Typically, low in, the units that are considered low income, mostly happen through subsidies. If you're going to do ADUs, I mean, they often don't get into low income, you know, even if it's really small, I mean, you got to look at the amount they're charging per square foot. You know, is it truly a low income unit? And oftentimes those ADUs are not.
Okay.
We have a few, uh, questions on Zoom, Jean, would you like to go, and then Julie?
Yes, hi, this is Jean.
We can hear you.
Thank you, that's a lot of information. I do have a couple of questions. So, we're, um, when this is accepted, we're going to have, um, single room occupu- occupancy units. I believe. Um, so say that somebody had, uh, three rooms and they, uh, they rented out, uh, two, I mean, three bedrooms, they rented out two of the bedrooms, would that be, uh, one, uh, satisfy the units uh, that are needed for the city? Am I making sense?
Are, did you have more questions, Jean, or do you want him to ask?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and also, uh, it was specified that we had to have, um, a piece of property that was, um, a, emergency, for emergency shelter, and I believe that it was at the end of Taylor Way that, that was specified for that. Um, i- is that still, uh, in the plan? Is, is a question, and one more question, I noticed on the zoning that, uh, uh, the park uh, and the horse arena are both open space recreation. And I was wondering why that's not, um, public facility. And that's it for my questions, and thank you.
Okay, so I think Gary, you could probably answer the first one anyway, and then maybe staff can answer concerning the emergency shelter.
I, I can answer all of them.
Oh, okay, great.
Um, so I'm not, I'm not an expert on SROs, um, and I've never participated in counting those towards arena. But she's correct that in the implement- But she's correct that in the implementation program HI one, that we are required to adopt rules in regards to um you know, SROs, single room occupancy. Um, we could find out from the state how those are counted. Um, I don't know that they're necessarily counted as a unit, uh, but they are definitely encouraged uh because it's a, you know, could be a potential form of more affordable housing.
Yeah.
Um, as far as emergency shelters, uh, that was also something the state told us we had to implement in order to, I think they wanted it done before adoption of the housing element update because it's an old rule. And what it is, is that the city had to pick a zone somewhere to allow emergency shelters, um, somewhere that was an appropriate location. Um, so we picked the opportunity zone. You know, there's limited sites in the downtown and retail commercial and mixed use. Obviously, we're not going to have emergency shelters in the single family neighborhoods, so we chose, you know, the the opportunity zone in the Powers Creek District, and that was already adopted uh by the council as part of this three year process. Um, so sure, that's still part of the plan, and it was essentially already implemented. We don't know that there's a great need for emergency shelters in the city, but the opportunity zone would be the place where they would go if one was proposed. Um, as far as the zoning for uh the parks, that's something that the city did in probably the last time they did a more significant general plan update process. You know, you have your public facility and you have your open space recreation zone. Some areas ended up as public facility. I mean, City Hall, the school, the old dump site, part of the river. But most of your parks and the creek and things like that uh ended up in the open space recreation zone. And that's how it's been. Um, as I noted before, we had part of the creek and the levee trail in light industrial industrial zoning uh since the eighties. And we fixed that with the Powers Creek District planning process to put those in open space recreation, which significantly limits any sort of development potential on those areas.
They were also at one time emergency accesses for our fire department to get in the, the uh the trail on the um side of the Powers Creek.
The creek trail, yeah.
Yeah, that was an emergency entrance for vehicles.
Yeah, and then in the late nineties, the city adopted a trails plan, which identified that as part of the city's trail system. So it functions as both, really.
Yeah. Okay, um, let's see. Julie, did you have a question for the planner concerning this?
Um, since this is mostly discussion, I just mostly have comments. This has been ongoing. Um, screen sharing, like our prior presenter did, would be greatly appreciated. I feel like some of my comments are more back on prior conversations because I'm not able to look at the presentation. Um, I will say this, other cities in California that can't accommodate due to infrastructure and rezoning, they are fighting back against the city. And our ozone was supposed to work to accommodate work housing with our industrial. Um, I think we really need to be direct and transparent within the housing element on our wastewater treatment and public safety before we continue to deny and allow hookups. And strategically, in the back room, shutting down the infrastructure that's meant to run the rest of this county. Uh, I just hope we have more attention on the timeline as well. Gary, you disclosed some really cool facts right around eight o'clock, eight oh five. Those comments that you made, um, were very, very new, and I appreciate you for getting them out there. We'll have to go back to Justin's recording to get them. But, you know, the state has allocated Humboldt's medium income to be around like eighty seven, eighty five, eighty three thousand for a household of four, and that makes like, that's coming from realistically, you're only sitting around like fifty three thousand. The state is deciding what our medium income is. Then it's deciding what our true in, low income is. It's not even really, it's hypocritical, and we really should be attentive to that instead of bending a knee sometimes. But regardless, with the density bonus and the negative declaration like that's trying to be crafted and pushed into this so that Danco can get their state funding, I think, and I really hope our next council can take more review on that. We're really going outside of state mandates. We're really kind of focusing in on how developers are um streamlining everything that's going to happen here with regardlessness to the real infrastructure that we have going on, regardlessness to the environmental hazards that we already have going on, regardlessness to that we need those areas as open space, as additional parking, as a place to have any kind of Red Cross refugees. And we're already moving our corp yard out of there into a place that we can't even technically put it, so I just think there's a lot more review that's coming. And by December tenth, we need to know. Do we have more time for public comment would be my only question? And is that public comment only going to be what is written and sent in? Or are you going to finally take the public comment that's been given to you guys over the last few years outside of of written comment? Because the only thing that's been scripted in that so far has been written comment, and if that's going to be the way it's going to be, please disclose that to the public finally tonight, and when they can finally get that into you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, did you want to answer any of those questions? Okay. Well, the the written comment, the written comment versus the oral comment, I mean, we have minutes of all of our council meetings, so I think that has reflected in um the the comments are reflected in our minutes.
Could I ask about the um the density bonus and how that could apply in Blue Lake specifically?
Um, so the state has state density bonus law, which some of you may be familiar with. We're not actually proposing uh through the housing element update to adopt any local version of that. Many jurisdictions have. We're essentially just proposing to default to state law, whatever they require. It doesn't make a lot of sense for a community like Blue Lake to expend resources to do something that the state's essentially already doing. You know, but if anything, we can just make reference in our code, whatever the current state law requires. That's what we'll do, basically. So we're not proposing any type of density bonus. However, a developer could come in and propose coverage under state density bonus law and get certain increases based on the amount of affordable units they're proposing. They also could get exceptions or what they call concessions or waivers from development standards like height or setbacks or parking or things like that. So that's already existing state housing law, state density bonus law, and we would essentially just implement it as required by the state.
So can you give us an example? One one acre parcel, which, say, if it's the Calgon Carbon area, assume it was only one acre. Somebody could come in and do sixteen units with a maximum height of, was it thirty five?
Uh, it's forty five feet.
Forty five?
Of Taylor Way.
Okay, and so if if somebody came in and did that, but then they wanted to apply the bonus, what does that mean? Does that mean they can go taller and they can do more than sixteen units per acre?
There are allowances for height increases in state density bonus law. Um, obviously, it allows higher densities. That's that's its main purpose. So, yeah, somebody could ask for coverage if they, and there's tables, like, it's hard. I'd have to look up the current table uh in state law and see what it says, but it's like, okay, ten percent, you know, affordable units, ten percent of the units are affordable to lower income households, then you get this many units, you know, that kind of thing. Um, so you would just have to look at what the current requirements are.
So depending on your income level, you get a certain, a certain percentage of density, you know, increase then?
Depending on the income level of the units you're proposing to construct. So state density bonus laws typically used with affordable housing projects because those meet the criteria for getting increased densities.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Uh, are there any other questions or comments from council or public? Okay, so um recommended action at this time is to receive the presentation and add the adoption of the housing element to the December tenth, twenty twenty four meeting. So thank you, Gary, for all your hard work and especially the great explanation.
Do we wait till future agenda items to put that on there, or do we just say it now?
Yeah, we can. I would just like to put forth the concept that um the new council is going to have a lot to do and process and deal with on December tenth. And I think that this presentation, um, you know, we want to be able to give it as much time as it needs, and I think I think we probably shouldn't try to do it on December tenth. I think we should hold it to maybe our next full meeting so that we can give it all the time it deserves and um and ha- and give people an opportunity to process the information they've received tonight. Um, and uh and go from there.
So that would be like the Jan.
Um, so basically, the, you know, we have to notice for a public hearing, so obviously, we couldn't have gotten it on tonight for a public hearing, uh, because we have time. Um, so the next meeting that we could have put it on was December tenth. And typically, when you get a recommendation of the planning commission, you want it to be timely. You know, you want it to come to the commission as soon as it can, or sorry, the council as soon as it can. So that's in essence what we were doing.
Sure.
Um, if there's a desire on the part of whatever the makeup of the new council is to have it be at a later meeting, then then so be it. I mean, that's that's up to the the council, so.
Yeah, I just, I personally just feel like there's going to be a lot of new people that are needing to get up to speed, and there's going to be other topics that will have to be addressed as well. So it just seems to me that it would, it's going to be awfully crammed. And uh, and I think people just need a little bit of time to settle in before being asked to adopt something as monumentous as the housing element.
And in the past, um, it was not uncommon in Blue Lake to have uh multiple hearings before either the planning commissioner, city council, before a recommendation was made, or before something was adopted, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so it looks like something we could look at for the January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting.
So Gary, are you recommending that we still hold a public hearing on the tenth, but that they could um potentially push adoption to their January meeting?
Yeah, I think you should hold as many public hearings as you need to.
Okay.
So that's a more formal setting for receiving public comment versus, you know, this kind of discussion.
Which is something that one of the, which is something that one of the public members noted too, was that time for more public comment would be, would be um appreciated as well, so.
Yeah.
Everyone's what Ali says, there's going to be a lot on their plate, but we can leave it up to that council to say we can adopt it now, or we can push it to the January meeting, and like Gary's saying, the more public comment, the better. So why not just leave it on there? Have the public, have the public forum, and then you can push it back farther if you want more time.
Are you wanting to do a presentation again on the tenth? Like you did tonight, or?
Whatever you guys would like to.
What do you, well, what do you see as the public hearing consisting of?
Uh, basically, receiving public comment. If you would like a presentation on certain things, it would be good to notify staff of what that is. Are there remaining questions, outstanding issues, things like that? And that way, we can continue to narrow our focus on the remaining issues that the council would like to be addressed.
I see. Okay, thank you.
And that could be addressed at the tenth from the public and the council to bring back to the January meeting.
Right.
Yeah, and this will be the second recording of this presentation that will be available as well. So the same presentation was given to the planning commission.
Yes. So I, I think it'd be really helpful for folks to have um have these videos linked on the website to where, you know, we can have a news item come up, and we can say, review the presentation on the housing element, you know, and they can just have links that are going to take them right to the right part of this meeting. Um, and so we're going to ma- make it easy for people to find what they, what they're looking for. Um, you know, if somebody sees, you know, a a hearing notice, they're like, ah, something's coming up. Well, like in this case, there's a lot of information to review. If we can make that, you know, easily available, just that, you know, like a one click kind of a deal, um, I'd really like to have that be part of what we offer on the website so people can get up to speed.
Um, so right now, under the general plan uh webpage that was created, which is, I'm really glad we have that. Uh, we have this current draft. We have the sequo document. There was a few revisions made based on agency comments. That's up there. And I believe, do we have the presentation now as well? Um, so we're trying to get as much info up there as possible for folks to review, but it's it's easy enough to go to, what is it, community and then general plan, and it'll take you to all those documents.
Right. So you're saying which presentation is there?
The one that you were just.
On video?
Uh, no, but that's.
Okay, so, yeah, I'd like, I'd love to get this video. I, I mean, I didn't watch the one from the planning commission.
I thought that one was better, but. You're going to put one up there.
Well, well, I just the question, the question answer here was really helpful. Um, and I don't know, did you have that at the planning commission as well?
We did, but they were different questions.
Yeah, so maybe we put both of them up there, or we can splice in the question answer. So one video or something. I think that's really helpful. I mean, I know the slides, the slides offer a certain amount of information, but I think the explanation really helps people grasp what this means and how it's applied. So.
And of course, Gary is available for anyone to call him and make an appointment to talk to him about any of the questions.
Has happened. We've had a number of community members come into office hours and want to sit down and go through the documents and the sequel document and things like that, so.
I just feel like if we have it on, you know, if we have a video recorded already, you know, if people have an opportunity to see that first, and then then they can make an appointment to ask you different questions.
Sure.
Or not.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that is all we'll be doing this evening on this item. So we'll move on.
Looks like we had a comment here.
Oh, um, you've already had one comment for this. I'm trying to keep consistent with that. Can we give her twenty seconds? All right.
Probably one person.
Thank you. Uh, I think as we have another opportunity to examine the housing element, if we could also maybe incorporate that some, uh, address some of the concerns about the circulation element and um and also parking requirements. So in other words, if you have a residential lot and now there's going to be four units there, are there any requirements for the number of cars that could be there and where they would be parked? Is it all on street parking? Um, just basically, you know, trying to get to a little bit more granular uh level when we envision what this looks like. The more that we can explain and dispel fear, the more success I think that we could have with it. Um, so circu- circulation element and parking requirements.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on then to item nine. Second reading and adoption of ordinance number two zero two four dash five four four. Um, this is the metal roof ordinance. Thank you, Gary. Good night, Gary. And this is the second reading by title only of the um new ordinance and the adoption of that ordinance, which will be um adopted by um a roll call vote. So, uh, is there any further discussion from council about this issue? Anyone from public about this issue? Okay, back to council for a um motion and a second.
I make a motion to accept second.
Okay, motion made by Christopher Edgar, second by Chris Fire, to uh conduct the second reading and adoption of this ordinance by title only. Any further discussion, roll call vote, it's an ordinance?
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
May I have potential?
Yes.
Required?
Yes.
Councilmember Sipony?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Okay, that is unanimous. I will read this. The second reading adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Blue Lake to amend section seventeen point two four, point two six zero of the Blue Lake Municipal Code, adding metal roofing to the design standards.
Yay.
Okay. They're coming, coming up quite often.
Ever.
It's so long.
Why was it against the rules?
It's just, we're a little.
There used to be, metal roofs don't look like metal roofing today.
Yeah.
You know, tin roofs.
Origated nastiness.
The old, old galvanized steel roof.
Okay, um, we are on consent agenda. There's September twenty fourth minutes, salary scale adjustment, and the warrants and disbursements. Um, I suggest that Christopher excuse himself for B and C.
Yep. So, all right, let's, can we, well, we're going to break everything out, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah. So it looks like we're going to do minutes, ten A. Have any corrections or additions, I guess.
So there are a few corrections to be made, I think.
We have a, we have a minutes correction um mailer from Michelle Louis Luso. Is it, yeah, hopefully, yeah, but it's, but it pertains to.
Correct.
So, okay.
It should be on the minutes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Her name should not be Melissa. It's Michelle. Okay?
Yep.
Got that.
Thank you.
And um and the other comment um about Julie Christie's um. And the other comment um, about Julie Christie's um. Uh, comment, I have to find that here, maybe just a second.
Page three, was she agrees with you?
Well, there's the thing where it says. Where it says totally off topic.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
I'd like that to be removed, because it's um. Kind of judgmental and unprofessional, so I don't think it should be in there.
I apologize, the way we have the minutes structured, Tony takes public comment and I take council discussion. So I didn't catch that, I apologize, that shouldn't be in the minutes.
Okay.
We will correct that.
Thank you.
Any other corrections or additions to the minutes of September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four?
And Julie's got her hand raised.
Kat and then Julie? Go ahead.
Super quick, under Kat Napier, this is item three, Kat Napier.
What page are you on?
It's page two, item three, public comment. Second line, uh, manager quickly facilitated meeting with herself, S H N representative. And Kat, the R A owner was not present at that meeting, so would strike and R A owner. R A O owner, he wasn't there at that one.
Thank you.
All right, and Julie, did you have a comment on the minutes of September twenty four?
Yeah, it'll be very quick, and thank you for taking my comment, Elise, thank you for catching that. I, within the packet that we had to check out for this week, and we always get it last minute. I actually just always put a grain of salt for the minutes. However, at the last planning commission, I really did commend them, you guys. We've gotten to have this like um, habit. Of um, being very interesting with what public comment is saying, and the one habit that I do not like to have. Is that they may comment. Um, I don't care if you say I'm off topic, I don't care, but don't just list me as making a comment. Without at least trying to review the key points that those comments were, um, otherwise. Within your minutes, maybe you could be polite and put a link to Justin's recordings. That any other prior discretion upon meetings can be viewed upon this recording now that you're paying him, thank you.
Thank you, all right, um, any other further comments about the minutes? All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes with those corrections and additions, so moved. Motion made by Angela Shaw, seconded by Christopher Edgar to accept the meeting minutes of September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. With the noted corrections and additions, any further discussion? All who are in favor say aye. Opposed, it passes. Um, let the minutes reflect that Christopher Edgar is now leaving the building. As we discuss items to be, the salary scale adjustment. And, I'm sorry, uh, ten B and ten C, October warrants and dispersments. Were there any questions or comments about the salary scale adjustment?
Just so I understand it correctly, this um, the rounds fee is a flat rate paid. Whoever does the rounds, so it's being bumped up fifty bucks to accommodate the additional time for field.
Yes. Okay, perfect, any other questions or comments about? Item ten B. And I'll entertain a motion to wait, public comment. Yeah, we can do that before or after, all right, any public comment about? The salary plan adjustment uh, from public? Back to council for a thoughtful vote.
I move we accept it?
Second, motion made by Elise Sapony, seconded by Angela Shaw to accept the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five salary plan adjustment. Any further discussion from council, all who are in favor say aye. Opposed, it passes, and we are now on the warrants and dispersments. Any questions from council, first on the warrants and dispersments?
I have one, um, so Alves Roofing, I'm assuming, well, Alves Inc. It's a check number one, two, three, six, six. Um, can I guess that that's from Crash Hall, or is it something else?
Eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand three hundred eighty-three.
Yeah, so that is the, uh, that was the balance remaining for the new roof for Crash Hall.
So can you tell us what exactly happened on Crash Hall? Did it get a whole new roof, a full tear off and, or what happened?
Yes, it got a full new roof. Um, the sheeting was fine, um, originally, we were going to do a re-roof, because we thought there was only one roof on there. Um, when they got into the building, they realized that there were actually two already on the building, and so we did a full tear off and re-roof.
Then so went down to plywood sheeting?
Yes.
And what type of roof did it have, did it get?
It's a asphalt um, composite shingle, yeah.
And so what was the full cost of that?
It, the total cost was about fifty-four thousand.
That's not bad with this kind of cost of roofing these days.
Yeah, no, we lucked out, well, and they gave us a really good deal on it as well. We actually were able to buy the shingles um, early on, so we um, got a really good deal on those before the pricing structure went up. And then because of um, kind of the miscalculation on their part, not seeing that there was a second roof. They um, they gave us a, a pretty steep discount um, on that as well, so I think. On the extra, they basically took off their profit, so.
Square footage of that roof, do you know?
Um, I don't know, off the top of my head, but it's several thousand square feet.
And then on check number one, two, four, one, nine, R A O. Construction, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, now that is our truck route. And is, um, how much of that is left to pay?
What's, sorry?
How, how much of the truck route is left?
Um, so we have made, I believe, two payments on that, the total contract was almost one point five million. Um, so we have, we have a substantial amount left to pay.
Yeah.
But a lot of it is paving.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, any other questions or concerns about the warrants, anyone from public on the warrants? Back to council for the acceptance of the warrants and dispersments. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Angela Shaw, seconded by Chris Fire to accept the October warrants and dispersments, all who are in favor say aye. Opposed, it passes. Need to go find Mrs. Stewart. All right, we are back, and we are now on the council correspondence. We, we have, um, oh, that was concerningly. Let's see, we have something from Kent Sawatsky. For the comment agenda item with number three, approval of the agenda, was this supposed to be read during the approval of the agenda? Oh, oh, I see, oh, okay, one of them, we already addressed, if I remember correctly.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right, um, and then free thought. Free thought day is some correspondence considering. That the Blue Lake council members make a statement that rejects project twenty twenty five. And that came in as correspondence, um, Lori Ponte mentioned her letter. That was, um, I think, it was emailed to me, I don't know if everyone else got the email on it. I think it was just to you and Elise and Mandy, I remember.
Um, I, I would just like to comment on, on Lori's letter, um. Where she did ask that there be a, a report on um, the Danco project and the RV park project. And um, during our, our agenda setting committee meeting. We felt that it was appropriate for the next substantial update on those two items to come before the, the new council. And I think currently, both of those projects are kind of in a holding pattern, so I don't know that there's a lot to. A lot or any new um, information to, to share, but. Um, but I think that that's gonna be coming forward in the coming, uh, in the coming months with the new council.
Right, and the um, we did get a final report about the Storyland project. Um, and then the Danco project is ongoing, so, yeah, it'll be something good for the new year.
And, oh yeah, that reminds me, um, so Mandy, you mentioned that there is a videotaped presentation of the, the full Storyland. Uh, and that, and that exists in the, in the course of various commission?
Um, actually, I provided it to council, I did a full presentation on the Storyland project to council with a live presentation. It's been presented um, at all the commissions and to the city council.
Okay.
It's like a eleven or thirteen minute video?
Yeah.
So if we could, yeah, I'm, I'm hoping we can get that video and whatever part of the council meeting. Addresses questions and answers, um, and discussion on that, and then we can post that to the website. You know, to its own little spot, so people who want an update can, can uh, go there and, and watch that at their leisure. I'm hoping that the website can serve um, to inform people in a way that is not labor intensive for staff. So that, um, you know, somebody can have easy access to the information that we can offer. And then if they have continued questions, that they can come to the council and ask for an agenda item or. Or go to staff to clarify questions or whatever, but I'd like to be able to use that website, you know, to its best advantage and save everybody. Um, some time.
I agree, uh, we have contracted with the webmaster, I'm gonna call him, I can't remember his name. Yeah, okay, Andy, I mean, maybe that's something that he can look at to make it a little easier for people to access.
Um, well, that's kind of on us, that part's on us, because we need to, we need to assemble the, the material. And um, and we can publish to that, he, we could, we could give it to him and ask him to put it there as well. But like, we would have to identify the information, we'd have to say, okay, here's that presentation, here's the video, and the video. Part that we want linked is at this point in the video, and this sort of thing, so. Um, so yeah, we have, we have some work to do on the front end, and then he could make that, um, that, you know, he could actually publish it to the right. The, the designated spot on the website.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, the idea that you had that somebody could look at our minutes and say, well. I wanna see just the discussion of the Storyland project, for instance. I mean, is that something that would be easier for him to do? I mean, we're publishing the minutes and we're pu- we're publishing the.
Well, that would be pretty labor intensive for him to do, and we're paying him forty-five dollars an hour, so I think we probably have some staff. That could identify it more quickly than he could. Um, and uh, and potentially, you know, break that out so that we could, um, you know, just hand it over to him for the. For the technic- technical parts, I mean, we're not, we're not hiring, I'm, in my, well, from my perspective, we're not hiring him to do the research.
But it just seems like.
That's something that could be discussed.
Something more technical, yeah, all right, so we are now um, past the council correspondence. And on to reports of council and staff.
So as we mentioned earlier, um, under the city manager's report, um, A I. Um, I'd like to pull that and add that to a closed session agenda item.
Well, I was gonna have us first do reports of council.
Oh, sorry, I thought we'd already done that.
No, no, sorry, so. Let's go around, it's okay. Christopher, did you attend any meetings that you would like to report on?
No, I did not attend any meetings, but in good faith of being of city personnel, I'll tell you that we survived this big storm. It was a lot of work, Luke was there, and they, we did it.
Good job.
Lots of sandbag distribution?
Yeah, we actually had over five hundred sandbags.
That's good.
It's awesome.
A couple trees, I noticed you guys.
Ninety-five percent went to the bike park.
We did, we, uh, what, was that again?
I, I missed that, ninety-five percent went to where?
To the bike park.
The whole down.
Oh, the sandbags, I see, yes, yeah.
You mentioned trees, what?
Was there some tree damage over here?
Oh, yeah, well, it's split in two minutes, it was rotted on the inside, so we took that one out, so it fell across the south river.
And the other significant stuff?
No, nothing, we found some blockages and unblocked them, found some I N I that we're trying to fix right now.
I N I, what's I N I?
Intrusion, like, um. Stormwater intrusion.
I noticed there was a little. A little part of the new paving that came apart up here.
We have our first pothole. Yeah, so that'll all be remediated, so there's um, parts of the asphalt, I think. Towards the end, when it was getting cold, um, parts of the asphalt didn't hold together, so Mercer Frasier will come out and re-grind and repave.
Bummer.
Okay, uh, Elise, did you attend the meeting?
I did, I. Went to a public safety commission meeting. And um, there was a discussion about uh. The um, the talks with Ferndale for law enforcement. It's right there.
Another meeting you went to?
We went to Parks and Rec, but we chatted about that bef- at the last meeting. But yeah, um. The uh, safety commission has formed an ad hoc committee to be, to take part in the discussions with Ferndale. And I did also go to an RCA meeting, and we had a very, very, very short agenda. So there was nothing major to report there. Um, as you know, Beth Burks is gonna be our new director, and I believe she's starting after the new year. Um, and uh. And uh, I, I watched the Ferndale meeting, council meeting where they um, they discussed uh. Continuing talks with Blue Lake about law enforcement, and that was an interesting conversation uh, to witness, and so that's, they all, they all approved that. And I think that's all I got.
Thank you. Okay, I attended a Humboldt Waste Management Authority meeting, and the reason the packet is so big is because we went through our financials. And we had our twenty twenty four right na- financial report. Um, we approved uh, uh, the revised account clerk job description. We um, had a request for bits for a scale replacement project. Um, and then we received a proposed timeline draft and draft request for proposals for. Organics Processing Feasibility Study, that goes along with thirteen eighty-three. Um, as a state bill thirteen eighty-three, um, and then um. That was basically all we did there. I attended a Humboldt County Association of Governments meeting, and it was rather quick, because we just went into closed session, because. Beth Burks is going to RCA, and so we are now contracting to look for a new executive director. And it could be someone local, or it could be someone from throughout, and the only other thing I want to announce is this Thursday, uh, this Saturday is the Arts and Crafts Fair. From eleven to four at the Mad River Grange.
When, what day?
This Saturday, November thirtieth, from eleven to four, at the Mad River Grange, is the museum-sponsored Arts and Craft Fair. And uh, food made by the Wanika Club.
Since you mentioned the grange, I'd like to add that there's um, a remodeling uh, committee, of which I am a part. Um, and there's gonna be a pretty substantial remodel happen in the main hall at the grange, and that's gonna get started, um. I think we decided to start it in, in January.
I thought January thirteenth was the date. No? Okay.
I think, I think that's right. We've batted around a lot of dates, so it's going to have to be straight.
Okay, moving along to Angela Shaw.
At redeck last night, we did not have a quorum. So that was not, which was, which isn't, okay, we just didn't have any, any action to take action on. However, we held our meeting at the North Coast Growers Association new facility over, off of Erickson and West End Road. And we got a tour of the facility, which was really gorgeous. The, the, the folks over there talked about the Harvest Hub that is going on. In essence, what they're doing is they've contracted with local farmers to provide, to provide fruits and vegetables to local schools and businesses in Humboldt and Trinity and Del Norte counties. Right now, and, and so not just schools, but particularly food for people. They're not really advertising to restaurants just yet because the demand is greater than what is being produced at this point. And so one of that, one of the things that they are working on is helping to connect farmers with grants and opportunities to be able to expand their production. With the goal of being able to put more local, more local goodies into local restaurants. But it was a really, that was a really cool component of what, what they're doing. Fun fact, Arcata has the longest continuous certified farmer's market in the entire state of California since nineteen eighty.
Amazing.
Super cool. But beyond that, what, what North Coast Growers Association is working on, they've got two other, a couple other big projects that they're working on. They are working with Redwood Region Rise and writing a proposal for the Catalyst Fund. To be able to do really two projects. One is to be able to create a new, a new facility to to butcher and process meat, local meat, since redwood meat is no longer doing that. And also to be able, and Thomas from Foggy Bottom Boys is really spearheading that campaign. The other thing that they're working on too is cold storage and ice distribution as a result of what's happening at Pacific Choice Seafood. And the fact that the, the two main cold storage facilities that were privately owned are also out of business. And so one of the things that has been a big topic of conversation with their membership is that what, what's happening is that all of these facilities that were privately owned and worked really well back in the, you know, thirties, forties, fifties, sixties are closing, and that's leaving local food, local food source in a lurch. And so North Coast Growers Association membership, which is not technically a co-op, but they are banding together to be able to create a solid food sustainability program for our region. Because as noted, you know, OES in all of their magical emergency planning has nothing in place for food. For food sustainability. And so, you know, and so that's one of the things that they've been considering, you know, and how to feed students and how to feed elders and how to feed you know, folks in the event of a ma- major catastrophe, but also to be able to, to stabilize food sources up here. You know, in a, in a broad capacity. And the third really, really exciting thing is, if you haven't heard what's going on at Del Norte with their fish market, they have, at their dock, they've created a fish market and they are doing fix taco Fridays with their schools. So they're, so they're selling, yeah, the fishermen are selling fish to the local schools and creating a relationship there. So based upon that, the North Coast Growers Association in, and I'm going to speak long on this. I don't care what time it is because it's a super, super, super cool, exciting thing, so bear with me. But Greenway, Greenway is a, is a group that is working with North Coast Growers Association. And in essence, what they've done is they've researched Bellingham, Washington's dockside market. And what they've been able to do, and they're putting something together for Matticat Plaza in Eureka with an expectation date, opening date of May twenty twenty-five. And the intention is to have a bi-weekly fisherman's market. And they are already in contracts with Eureka City Schools to sell fish, sell fish to, to their, to, to them so that they can start selling and providing locally grown fish to the students there and using them as a, as kind of a litmus test for, for what that looks like for other local schools, so. It was super informative. If you ever get a chance to talk with Megan or Ashley out there, it's just the two of them and they are making some serious magic happen. They are pretty amazing.
Thank you.
Very cool.
Uh, Christopher?
Uh, no correspondence. Unfortunately, I was ill last Monday, so I couldn't make the Arts Inheritance Commission.
Yeah, and I didn't make it either.
But it's going around.
All right, managers' report. We talked about the site management at two hundred Taylor Way. There's been a suggestion that they go into closed session at the next meeting. Is that the pleasure of the council?
Yes, indeed.
If that's what we need to do to discuss it, then we should do that.
Yes.
Yeah, if council's not prepared to act on my recommendation, then I would recommend that you go into, you have this for a closed session.
And we're going to announce this. We can see.
Oh, oh, yes. So unfortunately, I think most people know Annali is going to be leaving us. We're super sad. But she's got a really exciting new opportunity, so we're, we're really excited for her. Obviously sad to see her go, but not to rain on her parade. And we wish her all the, all the best at her new position with Arcade of Fire. She's not going to be a firefighter yet, but maybe she will join as a volunteer.
Not going to love you like we do. I'm just going to tell you that right now.
I told her all about it. Smelly, I don't know. So, yes, so we are, Tony has been acting in the deputy role and she has let us know that she's interested in coming into the clerk position. She's been doing a great job. She's also been doing all of the planning commission work and helping with all the agendas. So I'm really happy about that. And then we are, we had planned to move Annali into Vicky's position because Vicky is retiring. So we're making some adjustments there and we have released a position for a finance manager, so please spread the word. We're trying to get that out onto the widest market possible, so it's listed right now on Craigslist and different, we're getting it loaded to Indeed and, yeah, spread the word. So we'll be taking applications as they come in and conducting interviews as they come in because we do have, you know, there's, there's a lot to learn. We're hoping that we can attract someone who's got some knowledge. Fund accounting is, is kind of a specialized skill set that's not kind of your everyday bookkeeping skill set, so we'll, we'll be looking for someone who probably comes from maybe another municipality to fill that position.
That's full-time?
It is full-time, fully benefited. Yeah, it's a great position.
So what has Vicky said about her retirement date?
Uh, we are in negotiation.
I'm going to be like, how else to be champion?
It just depends on if we get applicants, if we get someone who has experience, if we get someone who can come in and take right over. We just, we're not sure. The job market is, it's pretty tight right now, but you know. So everyone wants accountants and people with the school finance background, so. So we're going to just have to see what we get, but she's flexible. She'll, she'll work with us.
There's a whole group of folks graduating from Cal Poly here in a couple of weeks with their BS in.
Yeah.
Yes, in accounting.
Yes, it's a great opportunity. I mean, we're a small city, but we're busy, you know. We do, we have a lot of moving parts and things are going to slow down a little bit. You know, we've had a lot of grants. We've been writing grants and bringing in money and projects more so than the city probably has done in fifty years. And so it has been extremely busy, but we're starting to see, we're kind of on the tail end of it a little bit, closing out a lot of projects. And so we're hoping that moving into the winter, things are going to kind of slow down a little bit and kind of equalize a bit. But we've been saying that for a few years now.
Just because we're a small city doesn't mean we don't have all the, we do all the same things. That large city.
We've just had a lot of big projects.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we have a lot going on in Blue Lake though. All right, future agenda items. We've discussed the closed session. We discussed the housing element.
Yeah.
So all that brought back.
I will just say too, real quickly, it's, it's fun being out and about in the community and in the job that I'm doing and people commenting on the excitement around all of the fun things, not the fun, but all of the, the moving parts that are happening in Blue Lake. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of conversation outside of Blue Lake about what's going on. And so it's gained, so there's, there's traction being gained well outside of the city limits about the bike park and about construction and about, you know, the, the town square and all the other things. And so it's, it's, there's, word is spreading, so it's, it's exciting. It's exciting to hear.
I second that.
Right, and December seventh is our four o'clock Christmas parade, tree lighting.
Slash my birthday celebration.
Had an interesting about that. So.
Alrighty.
Um.
We need.
Are we on future agenda items now? Okay.
Yeah. Do you have something for?
I don't know if it should be a future agenda item, but I wanted to bring it up as I, I agreed with a public comment about having a liaison with the Public Works. And I would, after being off of the city council, I'd be willing to put together like a monthly correspondence or some answer any questions at a meeting if you guys would want that. And I don't know if that should be on a, a agendaized item or how that would work.
I would probably do it quarterly, just based upon kind of.
Yeah, because we don't have.
Because I'm also the director of Public Works. But yeah, that would be something that we could put together, kind of report of like infrastructure improvements, how many issues we've had, whatever, but.
Yeah.
That's a great idea. Uh, I see a hand. Julie, did you have a comment on future agenda items?
Yeah, thank you for taking public comment. Is there a particular reason we did not take public comment on the last few agenda items? Okay, well anyways, for future agenda items, yes. We, we did, we missed correspondences and reports. I just want to jump back to Shaw. If you can keep your reports up for all the entities that you're really productive in, I really appreciated all your reports, Angela. And.
Thank you.
Yeah, I really did. You, you did a lot, Elise. And so just, I, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong topic, but new agenda. Yes, I think, I know Mandy's in charge of Public Works. But it's always great when we, we have somebody outside of that in their, in their sphere of influence to give a report. I think it's amazing. So thank you, guys. I concur with Christopher with that agenda item.
All right, we are now on adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Elise Scapani motions to adjourn. Chris Fire seconds. Is there any further discussion? Any discussion from public? Back to council for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.